The September 9th, 2024 Wichita Board of Education meeting is now in session. We appreciate your attendance tonight and those viewing. The Wichita Public Schools will be the premier district of choice and inspire each student and staff member to thrive and become future-ready within the greater community. And luckily, tonight, we'll be talking about that a lot. So, thank you for your patience and your willingness to listen to that each time we have a meeting, but it is something that plays in our mind as we address some of the big issues tonight. All board members are in attendance tonight. Please join with me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Tonight's pledge of allegiance is led by the West High JROTC cadets Brianna Pembelton, Nikolai Duran, Jack Dixon, and Samantha Moreno. Would you please rise for the public pledge of allegiance?
Colors, colors, colors. Oh. Left face. Present arms. West High Pioneer Battalion requesting permission to post.
You may post the colors.
Order arms. Present arms. Please go ahead and sign your pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order arms. Mark.
Patrick, first item, please.
First item under reports, good news.
Welcome, Wendy.
Good evening, President Reeser, Vice President Albert Superintendent Beilefeldt, and members of the board. As I thought about tonight's album, I thought about the statistic that we've heard a number of times, which is that children who are not proficient readers by third grade are four times less likely to graduate from high school. Add poverty to that, they're 13 times less likely to graduate. The importance of early literacy is so foundational to all of our kids and to the success of our community that when we had an opportunity as a leadership team to look at Fast Bridge screener results for our kindergarten students, it was so exciting to see. The growth has been phenomenal. When the question was asked why, we talked about letters, and you all have made a tremendous investment in the letters curriculum. And so, it made such sense for us to bring you this item tonight as a celebration of your investment, a celebration of the amazing teachers and curriculum leaders that we have in our district, that we are seeing progress in our kids as readers that will pay dividends for them, their families, and our community for years to come. So, we have an opportunity tonight to invite Ms. Amanda Scharschel forward. She leads our Learning Services Team in the elementary realm, and we have two rock star teachers that you will have a chance to hear from to understand more about how this is happening in their classrooms. So, please welcome our friends.
How's everybody tonight?
Good.
Glad to be here in front of you to celebrate two teachers. As Wendy discussed, we've been focused heavily on readiness to read, and then when I come to our buildings, are we providing the instruction to prepare them to be emergent and eventually proficient readers? So, tonight, we have Lindsay McCauley from Krista McAuliffe Academy and Sheila Marcellus from Caldwell Elementary, and they're really going to talk about the difference that the work we have done in our district has made for them as kindergarten teachers on the journey to every child or reader. So, I'm going to introduce Lindsay first.
Welcome, Lindsay.
Hello. My name is Lindsay. I teach at Krista McAuliffe. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Teaching students how to read has always been a passion of mine, and since adopting the Word Rec routines, this is my eighth year teaching kindergarten, and I've seen since that's been adopted, a significant impact in how the students learn their letters and sounds. The rate at which they learn those sounds is exceptional. It's starting quicker into the year because their letter and sound fluency, I mean, they're getting those letters so much quicker because of the exposure that they're being given. I just have to brag on my students for a second. Last year, or yeah, 94% of my kids met their Word Rec goal, or their word segmenting goal, which is what the district looks at at the end of the year, and I had four kids when they came in, they didn't even know their letters. And so, I mean, they just picked it up so quick. So, something I think makes a difference is the six alphabetic letter cycles that the kids go through. So, within the cycles, they learn a different letter each day, so six different times throughout the year. They get frequent practice and exposure to those letters through letter identification, learning how to produce the sound with proper mouth formation, recognizing the letter in text, writing the letter, going around the classroom and finding the letter, and just sound spelling reviews. So, that, I think, has really helped my students because I know it used to be, we used to teach one letter a week, and so now they're getting all this exposure and they're picking it up so quick. And the confidence that they have, they build as well is just amazing to witness because they're so proud of themselves also. Something else that I think has really helped is the structure and high expectations that I do have in my classroom. In order for academics to take place, we have to have those high expectations put in place. I expect a lot out of my students, and they know that, and they know how to meet those expectations, and the Word Rec routines help with that because they are very explicit, they are very direct, structured, and consistent. So, every day, the kids come in, they know what to expect, what to do, and so that helps a lot, and it allows more time for teaching and not so much with behavior, which is always nice, so. The district has also done a great job preparing us through kindergarten learning nights, support from our instructional coaches, trainers in the district and outside of the district, and letters. So, we're provided with ideas and best practices so that we can foster reading success with our students. And lastly, I would just like to provide some tips on how parents can help their future kindergarteners coming in. So, oral language is so important for reading success, so just making sure, just to talk to your children, have a conversation with them, ask open-ended questions, read to your child at least 15 to 20 minutes each night, and then also, this is a biggie, making sure that they're at school and on time, because in my classroom, we teach reading all morning. And I had a little girl last year did not know her letters and sounds because she wasn't at school, and as soon as she started coming every day, she met her goal by the end of the year. And so, it's so important that they are at school and on time, otherwise, they do miss out on those foundational skills that they need. And lastly, we all know how important reading success is to the future of our students, and watching the success of my kindergarteners over the past couple of years and the confidence they have formed from experiencing that success, it just makes what I do worth it. I enjoy it. I love the kids that don't know, come in knowing a lot. By the end of the year, they're just proud of themselves because they're readers. And so, that's it. I appreciate the chance to talk to you guys tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Sheila Marcellus from Caldwell Elementary. Like Lindsay, I really enjoy the younger kids. If you come into some classrooms, they will turn around and walk out. It takes a special one to be in that area because they're so young, they come in with not knowing a lot of skills. Over the past few years, though, we've seen our scores increase at Caldwell also. We haven't quite met the end-of-the-year goals, but from, in letter name fluency, we went from 20.9% proficient in '22 up to 48% in '24. So, we were very proud of that. The letter sound fluencies, we went from 14.9% up to 38%. And then our word segmenting, we went from 46.3% up to 52%. So, for the Caldwell kids, we were very proud of them and their hard effort that they had. A couple of the reasons we think that those scores were improving is from the Word Rec routine that has been established. Like Lindsay said, they get that alphabet six times, the whole entire alphabet, six times during the year. And so, if they don't get it the first time, they're not ready for it, they're going to get it five more times. So, they get it when they're ready for it. Also, the staff being trained over the Word Rec routine and the letters training, and then helping us to implement that curriculum has, I think, helped a lot because I myself, Word Rec at first was a struggle, but like anything new, once we keep practicing it, we get better at it. And I think that's where the kindergarten curriculum nights have helped a lot because it really honed in on each area of the routine and gave us that hands-on, so it was all focused on kindergarten those nights, and it was well worth my time. And that was probably one of the biggest supports I've gotten along the way, besides like the admin and the coaches and things that we have. Our attendance for us is a very big issue, too, for kindergarten to learn they have to be in school and on time. The chronic absenteeism, we can only do what we can, we encourage them, but if they miss that morning and don't come in till 10:00, 10:30, they've missed all of reading. And so, they tend to struggle, and so it takes extra effort to help get them up to par by the end of the year. And for families to help encourage those little ones, that's simply just talking to them, not just telling them what to do, but have a conversation with them and about anything and everything around them that they see. And then also, reading to them every day makes a big impact, just them being able to hear all the different words and things. It helps grow their vocabulary. Thank you for having us tonight.
Thank you.
So, along the lines of what Lindsay and Sheila shared, we will be sending home through Parent Link, just a one-pager for our families on letter recognition, reading aloud, and the power of the alphabet arc, which the ladies both referenced. So, that will go home to our families through Parent Link in English, Spanish, and Vietnamese, and I'll hand you one on my way back to my seat. Thank you for allowing us to bring teachers to your board table and celebrate success.
Thank you. And I think one thing, hopefully, the public will, that regularly views this program, we are committed as a board of education to start bringing in more teachers to talk to the board of education. I think the public gets tired of listening to the seven of us, and we're going to bring in more teachers more often.
I have a comment.
Yes, Melody. Go ahead and use your cue from here on.
Okay, will do. So, for both Lindsay and Sheila, this is Aunt Amanda. This is just a praise because I have, I have a, actually, she attends my church, and so I want to just say that she's my little friend. And so, she's been having some challenges with reading, and she wants to read so bad. I mean, she just wants to read, and so we've been working with her, and we've been doing some different things. However, I know the difference between us working with her and with skilled teachers that actually can implement all of these evidenced and proven methods that actually produce the outcomes of increasing those numbers. So, we were on our way out of church on Sunday, and she was literally reading everything she came, everything that came by, she came by, she was reading it, and she, you know, she didn't use her fingers, and she was so proud, and her grandmother said, she's just so excited that she's, she can read, you know? So, what you're doing, it matters so, so much because not only does it, does it empower that child, but it also fills the family, and it just spills over. So, I just wanted to give you a heartfelt thank you for all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item under reports, United Teachers of Wichita.
Hi, good evening, President Reeser, Vice President Albert, Superintendent Beilefeldt, and distinguished board members. I know last time I was here, we talked a little bit about the air conditioning and kind of the facility needs. It seems that those have been taken care of, but I do want to highlight that many of our classrooms are outdated and that it can cause challenges beyond the academic needs of our students when our classrooms are not well-lit, or if they have, are too small, or way too hot. And so, I noticed this evening, you're talking about a bond, and I just kind of wanted to talk about that this is more than a financial decision, it's an obligation to provide our students with the infrastructure that they deserve to succeed. I've seen, you know, I've visited other districts, and I've been in our schools, and we have phenomenal students, phenomenal teachers, but some of our buildings are in rough shape. And so, I just wanted to talk about that investment, not only for our students, but for the future of Wichita, and just emphasize that it would benefit both the students and the community, this long-term investment. So, I would like to urge you tonight to support any bond initiative as a means of ensuring that our students are not left behind and that our teachers have what they need to continue their important work. So, thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Patrick, next item.
Next item under reports, Service Employees International.
I do not see ESOW, so next item, please. Patrick?
Next item, public hearing on the 2024-25 proposed budget.
Do you want to? This is the hearing, so, okay. Okay. We're going to open the hearing now on our 2024-25 proposed budget. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to address the school board about the budget? Seeing none, we'll move to, I move that we close the public hearing on the budget. Moved by Stan, seconded by Kathy. And if you will remember how to use this now. It's been a while since we've done it the formal way.
Yeah, I guess we got late.
Here we go. Now you should be able to vote. There we go. Motion carries seven zero. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item under finance, 2024-25 budget.
And Mr. Superintendent, I'll let you start the conversation.
Sure thing. We'll invite Susan Willis up to present on the budget. As you know, you know, this is months of work and culminating with tonight's presentation. So, but tonight's presentation will be a walk back into some of the things that we've already talked about as far as the needs assessment go and us aligning our resources with our needs with the feedback of stakeholders. So, we're going to, some of this will be, I don't know that reruns are a thing anymore. My kids don't know what reruns are because on Netflix, you can just watch whatever anytime you want to, but some of this is reruns from past meetings, but they'll be, at the end, we'll ask you guys to approve the budget for fiscal year '25. So, take it away, Susan. Thank you.
Welcome, Susan.
Good evening, President Reeser, Superintendent Beilefeldt, Vice President Albert, members of the board. I would probably count myself as another one of those people you're probably tired of seeing after, after eight or nine months of budget discussions.
Never.
But we'll, you'll have me for a couple more, couple more presentations tonight. We have made it to the end of the budgetary process for fiscal year '25. Tonight, you had opened and closed the budget hearing, and we will have a recommendation at the end of this presentation for a budget adoption in addition to a resolution to approve the local option budget. Again, there are several requirements by state statute that we have to cover in the meeting in which the budget is approved. So, we are going to cover those specifically tonight, and we'll start with the needs assessments requirements. The first item we have to cover, so that it is reflected in the minutes, is that the needs assessments were provided to the Board of Education. And if you recall, we gave you hard copies in February of 2024. The Board evaluated those assessments. We specifically had a workshop in May of 2024. In fact, if you recall, we went through an exercise of budget allocation and some of the challenges of trying to build consensus around how to allocate a budget. And those needs assessments definitely demonstrated there are a lot of needs in our district. It is very difficult with one year of budget to address all the needs found in those assessments, but we do our best, and those decisions that the Board made from January through July are a direct reflection of the priorities in those needs assessments. And those major decisions that were made as far as what we aligned our budget to do were kind of summarized in this chart. We took the big, what I'll call the big four, teacher recruitment and retention, where we had a 5% base increase reflected in the fiscal year '25 budget, along with a step movement, track movement, and longevity movement for staff. The additional staff resources for student support specifically around social-emotional needs, that decision, which reflected our desire to keep the ESER positions even though ESER funds had come to an end, with a focus specifically on all of the behavior supports, child study team members that had been added. That, that change was reflected in this budget where we retained those staff. Those decisions led us to the very difficult decision of closing schools, but that aligned to what your needs assessments were telling you. Student attendance, you heard it from our two teachers, so appropriately timed. We retained secondary mentors to help continue to encourage our secondary students to, to attend every day. The expansion of everyday labs using title dollars, specifically in elementary, a little bit in middle, to focus again more on those high-need schools, getting those students to come every single day as much as possible, right? That's critically important to reading, math, because our educational pieces build upon each other. When you miss a piece, you're behind. And then, obviously, we've spent really the last 18 months, so even longer than the budget cycle, talking about the needs for building improvements, additional funds for capital repairs and maintenance. We reduced the number of schools, so that helped some of the deferred maintenance issue, and then tonight, we'll have our bond discussion following this presentation. That's the needs assessment process, and that's what the Board complied with all the components of that particular part of the statute. The second part of that statute is surrounding the state assessment analysis, and it requires the Board to answer three specific questions. What barriers must be overcome for all students to achieve above a Level 2 proficiency? What budget actions, recommendations, or reallocation should occur to address those needs and barriers? And if the budget action is implemented, what's the timeframe to get to where we want to be above Level 2? We've shared this in depth for tonight's purposes. I just gave you the district level recap. We are making progress specifically in reading. We have made progress out of Level 1 with increases at Level 2, Level 3, and a little bit at Level 4 in reading. Math, we have, we have improvement, but not as much, so we have some work to do with math, but we are still seeing that, that gain from kind of those post-COVID years. So, we, we have kind of met that 1%, particularly in reading. We've actually beat that. We didn't do quite as well on, on the math, but again, progress in the right direction. The level, the barriers have remained unchanged, really. The Board has reviewed these, and they continue to be challenges, really outside of the academic world, a lot of them. Again, it's around what, student barriers as far as poverty, attendance, mental health needs, and then staff issues. Again, some of those around student behavior, family needs, and, and really, community needs as well. It's a whole gamut of things that we cannot solely address from a budgetary perspective. So, again, going back to those four primary categories, this is what we did to align the budget to get where we want to go from a student achievement perspective. Will we get there tomorrow? No. Will we get there in a year? No. But will we continue to make progress? Yes. That is our goal, and we have specific goals that you set up in your strategic plan with points along the path to review those pieces of improvement to make sure that we are on track. And if we're not, then we can make course corrections accordingly. So, again, that student proficiency piece, if the budget actions are implemented, what's our estimated time? We don't suggest a change from last year's answers. The district goal is 50% of students performing at levels 3 and 4 by 2030, and the district goal is also to decrease the percentage of students performing in Level 1 by between 1 and 5% annually. What we did add this year was some specificity under that second goal relating to reading and state assessments, reading for the third-grade level and math by the eighth-grade level, and that's all in your strategic plan. So, again, you're seeing the alignments between all the plans that we are talking about. So, with that, again, this has remained unchanged since our first look in July, where we are recommending a $970 million budget for fiscal year '25. That's at a mill levy of 51.354 mils. That sets the legal maximum per fund. It reflects a 5,378 base aid per full-time student. It reflects a 6.7% compensation package for all benefited employees. It also reflects almost $28 million of spending reductions, partially through closures, partially through staff reassignments into open positions. And then, full use of the local option budget, we are at 33% of the general fund, which is our max. We did prioritize wages and critical staff through the budgetary process, and again, the mill levy is at a 14-year low based on where the Board wanted us to be. This wheel we've shown for several years now, it is how we spend our money, and the critical takeaway here is that we continue to, to run, 86 to 88% of our budget is in direct support of the classroom. The expenditures that you approve as part of the budgetary process, the bulk of them impacts students directly, and that's what we want the budget to do, is we want as much of that impact directly felt by students and staff every single day, as, and I think our two teachers did, did a great job of showing, when we invest money in professional development and other things, we really see gains. That's the whole point of, when we make these monetary choices, we can really see some real fruits come, come about. And so, this 87% in direct support of classroom, very consistent with where we've been for the past nine years, I think this is my ninth budget cycle, so I think it's been pretty consistent. We've seen some fluctuation between instruction and kind of the, the social worker, nurse, counselors. You can, that percentage has come up over time, primarily based on needs of students, but we certainly still have the bulk focused on classroom. So, unless we have additional questions that the last nine months have not been able to provide for you, we have two recommendations for you tonight. The first one, obviously, is to approve the local option budget, set it at 33%, and then administration then recommends the Board adopt the 24-25 budget.
Questions or comments or motions? Julie?
I would make a motion that administration recommends that the Board, or I would make a motion that the Board adopt Resolution 2024-06, setting the local option budget percentage at 33% for the 24-25 school year. at 33% for the 24-25 school year. And secondly, that the Board adopt the 2024-25 budget as proposed.
I'll second that. We'll now have discussion. Diane? Okay. Any other comments or concerns about the motion? If not, we'll take a vote. We'll let Patrick set that up and Joseph set that up, okay? And you may vote. Motion carries 7-0, and we'll start working on next year's budget.
We definitely have been, so we will, we will continue that one. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, bond proposal presentation and election resolution.
Thank you. We have one speaker tonight on the bond proposal, Walt Chappell. Welcome, Walt.
Good evening, Stan, and Board members. I'm not sure why I'm standing here. I've come to you on a number of different occasions, and I've expressed some concern about the fact we do not have a $1.2 billion deferred maintenance. There are never 63,000 students in our district for the last 30 years, but that was used to show you some optimization of existing facilities. We don't have a $42 million deficit. 80 million was left out of that equation of federal funds. When you add the federal funds back in, there was no deficit. In fact, when this Board presented its information to State Board last year at this time, you showed in July of this year, you would have 118 million cash balance. So what you just did, you approved a budget for next year with a lot of assumptions, that somehow all these different expenditures are going to make a difference. Now, what I'm concerned about, I'm sure you are as well, as laypeople, it's hard for you to get facts and verify. You don't necessarily know what questions they ask. I've been doing this for 50 years. I've had an opportunity to study in my doctoral program, school finance. I've been a budget director for a six-state federal project with 125 schools. I've done this kind of work for years, and when you follow the money, it doesn't make sense to go ahead with a bond issue at this point. But if you're going to go ahead and do that, I would ask you to do this. Please do not put it on a February ballot where you, as the Board and the school district, have to reimburse the county for the cost of that election. Instead, move it to November, when you have the elections for City Council and School Board coming up in 2025. And that'll give you a time to do two things. First, you'll find out what the enrollments figures are from September 20th. That'll give you an idea of how many students moved into the district, how many left. You're going to get a net balance at the point. And you're also going to be able to see if you got student behavior under control, because right now, that's one of the major issues in terms of how kids are learning and teachers are able to teach. When we have kids that are able to say or do whatever they want to do in a classroom, those teachers are really struggling, and that's not right. And building new buildings isn't going to help that. It's not going to change a bit. We found that out after 2008. We've seen this movie before. So if you approve this and go ahead and try to get 8% of the people and the registered voters to approve it in February, that's all the turnout you get, 8% to 10%. If you wait till November, you have an opportunity to go ahead and get at least 30%. I hear you.
Thank you very much.
I'll be finished in just a second.
I appreciate that. Patrick, next item, please.
Make a difference if you will please put it off till November.
Your time is up. You've, you're a longtime veteran. You know exactly how much time you had. Patrick, next item. Patrick, next item, please. As soon as you bring us some, we'll listen.
So the next year of the presentation, okay. So next item, I would invite Luke and, I don't see Luke. Oh, there he is. Luke and Susan, up to the podium, and we are going to talk about the second item under finance, which is the bond proposal presentation and the resolution for election. So as you all know, you know, again, this is, it feels like a night of culminations, right? The budget culmination of, of months and months. This conversation dates back even further, 18 months or so, as we've been talking about facilities, needs, the fact that it's been 16 years since the community, we've asked the community to make a decision about investing in our schools. So Luke and Susan are going to do some recap and maybe a little bit of new information, but I think a lot of tonight will be things that we're, we're just making sure everyone's clear on, and we can address any, any concerns or questions, so. All right, I think we're good.
All right. I'm the first part of this presentation, so I guess I get to kick it off. Good evening, President Reeser, Vice President Albert, Superintendent Beilefeld, and members of the Board. As I said, I'm kicking this, kicking this off, so I'll just start off. We decided before we got into the finance piece tonight, we just wanted to do one more quick recap of the, of the Step 1 piece of the master plan, and we have, every time we look at this, we come up with a way to, better, a better way to simplify it, and that's something we've learned through this, this process, is that it's a complicated plan, and it's, it's been difficult to portray it in a way that's really clear and concise and straightforward. And so what we've brought to you tonight is, this, this is our, our last pass at this, and I'll run through it, and this aligns with what we have on our website and what our Strategic Communications Department has put together on our summary documents that we have posted, so. Run through here. On our demos and rebuilds, we have five elementary schools, Adams, Black, Caldwell, Irving, McLean, and we have two middle schools, Truesdale, and Coleman is listed on here, although Coleman would not be a demo of the site. We'll get into repurposes here in a minute, but Coleman would, the existing Coleman building would be repurposed, but we do have it listed as a rebuild because the Coleman Middle School would be rebuilt on, on the site adjacent to the existing middle school. And we've got tons of land out there, so it won't be a problem. The rest of these buildings on the demo and rebuild list, they would all be rebuilt on the same site, not necessarily in the exact same location on the sites they're on. Well, I say that, but potentially, if we were to get some other land from Citi or something, then some of those could be rebuilt on, on different sites, but in very close proximity to their current locations. On new buildings, we have the Future Ready Center, which would be focused on our construction trades, and that would be built adjacent to East High School, where the Grove Campus B building is. We would build a new early childhood center on the Chester, the current Chester Lewis site, and we also have plans for Northeast Magnet to receive some new athletic, outdoor athletic fields. On the renovate and repurpose, Cesna would be expanded and converted to a K8 school. Isley would simply be converted to a K8 school, no expansion required, maybe some side improvements as we, as we make the change over to a K8 in terms of traffic flow and such, but pretty minimal. Existing Coleman Middle School, as I said, the current building would be renovated and repurposed into an alternative learning center. Wells, the current building, would be expanded and repurposed to house the Sowers Alternative High School program. And we also have plans for high school maintenance to occur at, at all of our high schools. On close, for close and relocations, this is a little bit of a, a difference from the, the demos and the rebuilds. These are, these are truly, we would be closing the buildings themselves, but they would be relocating to, to new spaces, new buildings. And a lot of these, we've kind of discussed where we would think they would go, but that is kind of finally yet to be determined, and we, that'll, that'll come as we go. So Chester Lewis Alternative High, that, that, that building would close, and we would relocate that program. Dunbar Support Center, which houses our multilingual education services and other programs, again, would close. They would relocate. ISC, our Education Imagine Academy, and the other programs located in there, same thing. Gateway, again, building closing, program moving. Little Early Childhood Center would be relocated to the new Early Childhood Center that we would be building on the Chester Lewis site, and the Sowers Alternative High, which I mentioned, would be relocated to the expanded Wells. And then on our building closures, true building closures, which we've kind of been calling these our consolidations, where these schools would be closing and moving into other schools, new schools, improved renovated schools, we'd have Lowerture, OK, PV, and Woodland. Any questions on any of that before I turn it over to Ms. Willis?
Julie?
And this might be as much for Superintendent Beilefeld as for you, but I, I did have a question this week from someone that I, I thought it might be helpful. I felt like I knew the answer, but I felt like it might be helpful to address from the, from the table. And that is, for, for these buildings that are, are closing and the programs are relocating, that would also even include Coleman, because the Coleman Middle School building as itself is closing and relocating, and, and some of the elementary schools and the other middle school. The programs, we intend to keep intact.
Yes, 100%.
We're just, we're just relocating existing programs with existing staff, and, and we're just moving them to different locations.
Yes.
But there's no intention or plan to, to eliminate staff or to make changes in staff as a part of this process.
Right. The, the only exception I might, just the asterisk I might put in there would be possible expansion. I do believe, you know, Dr. Hatfield and I, we've talked about, at our high school level, we probably need more options for alternative schooling for, for kids, right? You know, than, than the current ones we have. So could we expand some of those things? Yes. Could the, will the Early Childhood Center, it'll lift and shift little, but it'll also be more than that. We'll probably expand it with some out-risk programs and some.
Well, and the trades program is going to be another example of that.
But yeah, there wouldn't be any, there, none of those moves would have any kind of staff reduction plan or anything like that.
Or shutting down a current program, because we're closing their building. We're planning on keeping the programs, just relocating them to a different location.
Yep, exactly.
That, that was, that was how I understood, but a question in the community.
Knock.
For the closure of Lowerture, OK, Pleasant Valley, and Woodland, what would the timeline for that be?
They, it would, it would likely be, I mean, those would not be happening for at least three to four years, likely, and I don't have the schedule in front of me, but they, they wouldn't be closed until we have the new facilities ready for those, for those students to move into, so that's why they'd be kind of more on the back end of the, of the timeline for the, the whole plan.
Then most of those students and staff at the four proposed schools for closure would be moving to the new constructed schools, or?
Yeah, I, I don't know. I'm not sure yet to be determined, huh?
Yeah, to some extent. I mean, we would be building, the plan would be to build four-section elementary schools, like we did last time around with the bond issue. So when we built Linwood and Washington and Enders, those are all four-section, am I saying, am I, I'm pretty sure I'm right on that. So if we have, you know, some of these schools are two-section schools, so could they be absorbed, you know, between McLean and PV? Could, could all of those kids be absorbed into one building? Maybe, but there probably would be some boundary shifting that would, that would be a piece of that, too. So I think as much as possible, this, this won't feel like it did in the spring, where it really was just a kind of a scattering of staff. I mean, I think Sean might have mentioned in one of the meetings that our staff ended up all over the district. I mean, literally, in pretty much every building. We would, we would be able to maintain some continuity with kids and families with staff in this shift, but we're not going to promise that, you know, we're, we're just putting two buildings together, and the, the boundary lines might not be that neat, so.
And then what's been a staff response, like at these four schools, just like in terms of, you know, receiving this information?
Honestly, I, I haven't heard a whole lot. I think, I think most of them seem to understand the need, but that's going to be kind of this next phase is, is really getting out and engaging staff a lot more closely and more personally than I think we have thus far. But I know there has been some various conversations that, I know the principals have been engaged and all that, so.
Yeah, especially check-ins with the students and families, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Knock. Melody?
Thank you, President Reeser. My question is one from a community perspective. I've had several individuals, organizations that have come to me, wondering what it is that USD 259 is going to actually do with the buildings that we close. And my understanding is that it is, you've already named them, Lowerture, OK, Pleasant Valley, Woodland, Dunbar, Foach, Sowers, Gateway, and Little. So those are buildings that are going to be accessed. I mean, what are we calling that? And, and what is the process for individuals, entities, organizations that are interested in putting out a proposal together and presenting it to the Board, presenting it to facilities?
Do you want me to take that, or you want to?
Go, go ahead.
Okay. So the, the first question, the answer your first question is on. We have to send it to the, the state has first right of refusal on the building, so we have to declare it a surplus. And so that would, that'd be the first step in all the buildings that we close, and we have a committee that Mr. Almandarez is, is spearheading, and that's comprised of several community members, various trade partners that are going to be kind of helping be that brain trust in terms of evaluating potential buyers that are interested in those facilities, and then just discussing all that and bringing it to the Board and, and letting you decide what's, you know, what's the will of the, of the district.
And in the past, as well as what we're going to do at this point, we've done things differently at different times. Some buildings we've actually gifted, some buildings we have charged a certain fee. I don't know about charge, but maybe it was even, there was some negotiation. How do we determine how we're going to utilize and what the compensation is going to be for that particular building? I, I know they want to know that.
Yeah, I would say that's, that's, we're going to lean heavily on the committee to help decide, you know, what the criteria is. I mean, I think it, it depends on the building. There's going to be certain ones that are going to be, there's going to be a really high interest in, community interest in those specific buildings, others maybe not as much, and so I think we evaluate it on a, on a case-by-case basis and certainly try to come up with a consistent approach that we take across the Board, but I, I would look to the committee to really help formulate the approach there that we bring to the Board.
And along with that, I'm thinking that have, do we actually sell buildings that are then utilized for profit, a profit business and/or entity? Have we done that recently, or what's the precedent?
Yeah, there's been, there's been several, off the top of my head, I, I know there's several that they've turned into, there's one that they turned into studios, like art studios and things.
I'm thinking about Alcott also. Kellogg.
Right. Some of, some of them, they, they raised the building and used the land. Yes, we have sold some to developers, you know, even, even this Board has, has had, taken action on that last spring.
So it really does depend on the proposal, it sounds as though. So we could entertain and/or consider, such as we did with Park Elementary. That was, I know the city, but we could actually entertain a nonprofit being able to utilize that building for the good, for the good of the community.
I think everything's on the table.
Okay. Thank you.
I think she also asked where her interested folks.
Julie.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't supposed to interrupt.
I can jump, no, I can jump in.
Yeah, but, yeah.
So if you have a community member who's interested in a property, what do they do? Was that the?
Yeah.
Is that the question?
It goes to the committee first, or?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to establish a process for who to reach out to and, you know, what that, what that'll all look like.
Yeah, if you would do that and share with the Board, I'm thinking that we probably all will get. If you would do that and share with the board, I'm thinking that we probably all will get inquiries.
Sure, yeah.
Thank you.
I apologize.
No, 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 no.
Just like we talked about this morning, just, we're going to try to stick more to a business meeting as opposed to just informal chatting. I think we're ready to start the presentation again.
Very good. Okay, so as the facilities master plan coalesced, we really began looking, and we were looking all along, hand in hand with, how do we make this happen, right? How does this plan come to fruition? And so we shared with the board, in fact, I believe you were passed out a copy of the presentation from back in June, which did have a lot of the fact-based items related to the bond proposal. So I will be referring back to that a lot tonight. But capital outlay is not your answer for financing the facilities master plan. We receive around $50, $52 million a year in capital outlay. Of that, about $25 million is for design and construction, repair and maintenance type items. There is no possible way to make the facilities master plan happen at $25 million of capital outlay and nothing else gets touched. It just won't work. So your next option is to look at some sort of loan to finance your rebuilds and remodels, which is essentially what you're doing. And the loan mechanism in Kansas is to ask your voters to support a bond. And so that is what we are proposing tonight in order to have the facilities master plan, step one, come to fruition is financing through a bond issue. And we are asking the board to approve the voters taking this option to them for referendum and decision. So let's go right into the details. We are proposing a $450 million bond issue. We are proposing a date of election, that we want to take it to the electorate of February 25th of 2025. We are proposing an in-person election. We want to get the broadest possible base of voters to make their voices heard through the process. There is a cost of that election. The election office has estimated it for me at $113,000. We are, there's also an item later for the board to consider for some direct consultant support as we go through the various components of bond planning, specifically around how the facilities master plan will start to be mapped out and all the various committees. And there's just a lot of work to get a $450 million bond issue even to election, let alone as we start to get to construction and getting that community transparency piece. Make sure we're doing all the things that we need to do through the entire process. It's a tremendously heavy lift. This is not a small amount of work. I think we're going to need some help, particularly on the front side. We are proposing a mill levy of 7.5 mils. That is based on what's in the fiscal year '25 budget that you just approved. That is down from last year where we had 7.682 mils. We do not anticipate an increase in millage through the life of the bond related to the $450 million bond issue. The, we had shared with the board previously that the current bond's outstanding. We have enough cash ready to make those payments when combined with the expected state aid and the federal subsidies. So we are good on all of the 2008 remaining issues that are outstanding. That is, that's taken care of. We're only focused now on this particular bond proposal. And we've estimated very conservatively that we can do it at 7.5 mils. We are proposing a 20-year repayment period in order to make sure that that tax effort stays low, which was a very clear charge from the board. We want to keep this as low of a tax effort as we possibly can. So breaking it down a little bit further, again, that $450 million number is the maximum impact related to step one of the facilities master plan for no additional taxes, no additional tax effort other than what is currently on the books. It's a continuation of that investment that the taxpayers are making currently. The 2/25 date we like for several reasons. One of it is it's easy to remember, 2/25/25. There is a cost to that, but it does give us a period of time between now and that February date to educate and educate and educate. Because there is a lot. There is a lot to know. We've provided a lot of fact-based information. We're going to cover a little bit more of that again tonight. We will want to share that and make sure that people have a full understanding of what they are going to make their decisions based on this February date.
So if I could jump in too, the other thing that that allows us to do that I've mentioned before is we would be able to move dirt in summer of '25 if we're able to get an answer in February of '25. If we wait until April or May of '25, the summer obviously is the best time to do construction at schools. And so by putting it here, we would be able to, I don't know how much, but we would be able to start work summer of '25. So that's another kind of timing piece of it that allows us to actually get some things done because, you know, there's a lot to this plan. It won't be any cheaper if the longer we wait. And so if we could, the earlier we get it, then we can get construction started. And so I want to just throw that in there too.
Excellent. Again.
And Kathy, as soon as we get to a natural break about the, after the, up to the point about the information about the bill, bond levy, I'll call on you.
Okay, so again, in-person, that gives the greatest number of voting options because we would have a mail-in and an early in-person and the in-person on the election date. Again, the consulting help really providing a lot of additional support, one-time support as opposed to having to add some additional staff. And again, there's a lot of us, myself included, that we, I was not in this role when the last bond was issued because it's been 16 years ago. So there are many of us that have not been through the bond process. We're going to need, we're going to need some support to lean on. The seven and a half mils, again, we've kind of covered that. And that, that kind of brings me to how? How do we have a $450 million bond issue and not raise taxes? I think that's a valid question the board needs to understand. And I think if we go back and we look at 2002, when the bond mill levy at that point was eight mils. So we are actually proposing a lower mill levy to support a higher bond issue. And the reason we're able to do that is assessed valuation has changed in the past 20-some years, which if you're, when you're paying taxes, you feel it. But when you have property that's appreciating in value, you also are reaping that benefit, right? So it is the, it's the double-edged sword of if you buy a property for $100,000 and it appreciates to $200,000, that's a good thing when you go to sell that property. You will make money on your property. That's why people get into real estate, because it's a great way to make money. However, when you're paying those property taxes and you see those assessed valuations going up, it does, it hurts the pocketbook a little bit. But when you compare the money you make to the taxes you're paying, you are money ahead because of assessed valuation improvement. And that's exactly what we're banking on over time. When 2002, that assessed valuation was $2 billion, it raised $16.5 million of bond taxes. Go to 24, '25, our seven and a half mils will raise almost $29 million on a three-point, almost a $3.9 billion assessed valuation. You can see in the 20 years that we anticipate paying these bonds, our assessed valuation estimates would put us at almost $5.8 billion of assessed valuation, raising $43 million of bond levy taxes. We can finance this option at the seven and a half because we do anticipate evaluations will grow. And we're, our estimates are low. We're estimating between 1.5% and 2% assessed valuation growth. The average right now is over four a year, 4% a year. So we think we're, we are very, very conservative as far as where we think our assessed valuation will be and how much money that will raise to make these payments. We, this is very doable. So as we looked again at those fact-based reasons, the things we have been talking about a lot, and not just in bond conversation, but in budget conversations as far as the support of the facilities master plan and why we would want to finance this and move forward with this with a bond question. Certainly the upgrade, the need to upgrade and modernize aging facilities. You've got almost 60 buildings that are, that are, that are over 60 years old. So two-thirds of your buildings are over 60. Of the buildings that are over 60 years old, the average age is 75, which means they were built after World War II. Things have changed tremendously in construction, in HVAC efficiency, in the need for Wi-Fi throughout buildings. The entire concept of building then versus building now has changed. Needs have changed for students. We weren't doing as much of that differentiated teaching. So that when you go to an Enders and they have 900 square feet classroom with room for small group instruction versus Adams where you might have small group instruction in the hallway. It's a different experience at different buildings based on the age of that building. Your mixed ability rooms at an Enders or a Dodge or an Isley were built to be mixed ability rooms. At our older buildings, we've made them work, right? We've made pre-K work. Those are not necessarily the most ideal spaces for learning. Are they functional? Sort of. Are they ideal? No. That's why when we design a four-section elementary, we look at those things and how do we want a school to operate? And that is what, when we look at upgrading and modernizing, we start with looking at the models we already have, which are working pretty well. When I went to Enders on my school visits, I didn't feel temperature variations in that building at all. When I went to Franklin, that was a different story. It was hot, it was sweaty, and then it was cold and it was hot. It's just a different experience because these, a lot of these buildings, there's additions, there's different systems that are running through them. Again, not right or wrong, it's just fact-based. This is the experience that you have here versus here. We want to be more proactive with maintenance versus those disruptive repairs. We shared with the board earlier that we've spent $40 million on repairs at three high schools in the past five years. That was 40% almost of the entire allocation we give to Luke to do repairs over that same period of time on three schools. That, that response of reacting to repairs, we want to try to somehow start to get ahead of a little bit. We're not going to fix all of our problems in this particular facilities master plan, step one, right? It's why it's step one, but it's a start, right? It's how do we start? Capital outlay alone insufficient, we've talked about that. Newer and fewer elementary schools in particular, taking that 230 student population at a school and combining it with another 230 student population and making closer to 500, where that nurse that you had at both schools becomes one nurse instead of two. So I think in some respects, there is some efficiencies that can be had as you do combine, right? It doesn't mean people are going to lose their jobs, but it does mean when we have attrition, we can move one of those nurses to an open spot and we create that 500-student school with one nurse. That nurse per student is less expensive. And we talked about that, right? We talked about that that's efficient use of dollars and getting the resources spread around to the right places. Your needs assessments reflect this, right? If you recall, when we actually showed you the little charts as far as the principal and their leadership team and the site council responses, 60% of your schools are saying they need repairs. They need help in their buildings. That's a pretty significant number of people telling you, please do something. We're addressing the community desires for training in trades, early childhood, more K8s. You saw that through the surveys that Cooperative Strategies did. Over 16 years since the last bond, it's been, it'll be 50 years, because I had to go look this one up. This is the third time in 50 years that we've gone to the voter, would go to the voter if the board approves it tonight. That's a long time. That's four, at least four full generations of students since. And we've asked, we're just now asking for the third time potentially. So, and again, there's other things we haven't really spent a lot of time on. ADA compliance, right, as far as accessibility into buildings, the energy efficiency. If you read our board reports, the finance reports that we do monthly, we talked about the 11% savings in utilities over the past year. Some of that was luck, right, as far as temperatures not staying super hot or super cold. A lot of it was the work we did with Navitas and getting those energy efficient changes through the HVAC systems into these buildings. As we put in lighting, as we do, make those windows tighter, all those things help with energy costs, which are direct operational savings that can be used for teachers and other things going into those classrooms. Again, good stewards and good stewards of the investments. And then really the, I think the difference, even in some of the past bonds, this really is based on the structural needs of buildings, right? We're not talking about tennis courts and pools and different, you know, those are great too. But this is really about the facilities themselves, getting them to the point where they are, where we're getting more of a mix of new and old, right? So we're doing some replacements, some remodels, some combinations to start to balance that portfolio so that those deferred maintenance needs aren't, as they start, the systems start to go, right? Because the deferred maintenance in and of itself is not, right, we're not, we're just waiting. We're waiting to see when those systems will go out. That's all deferred maintenance is. You have it in your homes. Can guarantee you, you probably all need new windows or close to it. But you're waiting to see, do I really, do I, when do I really need to get these windows replaced? Or the hot water heater or your HVAC, right? When do I really need to do it? Okay, it's broken. Now I have to do it. That's what deferred maintenance is. It's we're deferring because we have other more critical needs that have come up. We have to make those choices because we don't have enough resources. That's how schools operate, right? There's not enough resources to do everything. We've said that many times. You can do anything. You cannot do everything. So we make those choices. This is a needs-based plan.
And before we get into the why, we'll take a couple of questions. Kathy?
Let me find this real quick. Sorry, I wasn't prepared for this moment. Okay. On the bond proposal, where the proposed amount is $450 million, the estimated cost of election, $113,000. Estimated cost of direct consultant support, $312,000. Where, let me ask this first. Those two different amounts, are they included in the bond issue?
The two, the $450 million would be financed through the bond, a bond tax levy. The two items that are one-time in nature, kind of specific to what we're doing to prep for the bond election, would come out of capital outlay. In fact, we actually had, we transferred some end-of-year dollars from the general fund into capital to specifically support these initiatives.
And could you tell me what would it look like if the bond issue did pass? Is it just a continuation then in like 2028, the '08 falls off? And then this new one would begin. Am I correct?
The, the payments for the new bonds might start as early as '26, right? It depends on when we sell and when that is set up. But they would probably have, we would cross over, so the 2008, we would probably still be paying on those while we're making new payments. But the seven and a half mils is sufficient because there's enough cash already put aside to deal with the 2008.
Okay, thank you.
Knock?
Yeah, two questions of clarification. So for this bond election, people would be able to vote in person? They'll be able to vote early in person and then they would be able to vote by mill?
Correct.
Okay. And then second question for clarification. Can you weigh like the advantages and disadvantages of, you know, like the earlier election date as opposed to like a later election date? Okay, just for clarification.
Sure. You want me to do that? Earlier as in February versus later in the spring? Is that, okay. Yeah, and we, we have gone back and forth on this as a staff. The few factors that came into play with the February date, one was the timing, like we talked about, that we feel like we could actually get some work started that summer to get ahead of it a little bit as opposed to waiting. We also thought it's a, you know, to align with the general election, messaging is hard. This is a complicated plan. Our community is not used to this. Our community is not used to this, right? They, it's been sixteen years. George W. Bush was president last time we voted on this. So, that's been a while. And so, we feel like having some space, so to speak, to engage voters, to engage community, to really get the message out is, is important. If we, as we wait further into the spring, we were, you know, other factors come into play as far as, you know, busyness of families and spring sports and all of those sorts of things. We did weigh the, the spring election too, but right now, the only, you know, the cost to pay for the election, you know, as, as far as we know, is the same, you know, if we picked a March date or whatever. So, we went with the twenty-five, twenty-five, two twenty-five, twenty-five to, you know, last Tuesday in February. We thought that was, that was a good time to, to move it forward so that we could start stuff in the summer. So, did I forget anything?
I think that was excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, and I'll start with the why.
So, fact-based reasons, we covered, and for financial people, that's exciting, right? We see the efficiency there, we see the, the appropriate use of tax dollars at work. But that's not necessarily what will drive interest in the plan, right? I mean, we, so you'd have to look, at least what we, we wanted to kind of bring to the board is a different perspective tonight related to the why. And, and really, you guys have been talking about this, whether it's directly or indirectly through your strategic plan, really for, for a long time now, right? It is, what do we do, right, to drive the graduation rates, to drive third-grade reading proficiency, to drive safety and belonging? I thought the superintendent did an excellent job when he kind of put that whole piece together, aligning the Facilities Master Plan with the strategic plan, that at the center is the feeling of belonging, right? How do we, how do we continue to utilize the resources that we have to bring, to bring meaning, to bring safety, to bring belonging, to bring all those issues, you know, under an umbrella of a plan with students at the center, right? That's why we're here. It's not, efficiency is great, but at the end of the day, we're not a bank. We don't save money. We spend money. We spend money on students, and we spend it on educating them to the best of our ability in facilities that are adequate to meet their educational needs. So, this really is, after, again, sixteen years since the last issue and really the third time in fifty, it's a generational investment in transformational facility needs, right? We've talked a lot about the needs. I think we've made that case fairly well. It, it isn't something we go and ask our voters to do often. So, it, it really is kind of that, really historic moment. It's a large issue, largest one we've seen. I think it might be the largest in the state. It's, it is a moment, right, to, to, to say, we're going to make a generational investment by asking our voters to, to consider this. It's innovative learning experiences. You've, you've seen those, those Verizon, you know, the grant, that, the little, whatever they are, I can't even think of the name. Yes. The, that's, those are exciting rooms to engage students in learning, twenty-first-century learning for skills that we can't even identify yet that they're going to need. I mean, I don't know that three, even three years ago, I would have used AI to prepare presentations, but I'm at least getting my baseline information now by throwing in questions, how do I do this? And it gives me back. And that's a tool, two or three years ago, none of us had even heard of, or maybe Rob heard of it, but not me. I had not heard of it. So, and, and now I'm utilizing it, right? And I'm, I'm of an older generation, but I'm, I'm, so how do we, again, embed those learning opportunities for students in our facilities? We do it through innovating learning opportunities, and we do it so that every student, right, whether it's your ESOL student, your mixed ability student, your, your newcomer, your traditional student, your virtual student, we start with making the facilities align to what we're wanting, which is innovative experiences. And really, it's student success. At the end of the day, we're talking about a plan, trying to drive excitement about a plan through fiscal responsibility. So, we really are combining the, the, the pieces of your primary responsibility, which is budget, with what your primary goal is, which is student success. So, it really is another marriage of really focusing your dollars to get the impact you're looking for. And facilities is part of that equation. It's, we knew that coming out of COVID, right? You saw the importance of students coming to school to learn. And we see the differences in schools where you have adequate facilities, where you have the gym and cafeteria, where they're spending half their day up and down on tables and having to change their schedules for that kind of thing. So, these are the, the things we can tackle, start to tackle in a Step One Facilities Master Plan with no tax rate increase, shaped by stakeholders, student and staff-focused, because it's not just the students that are experiencing those. We have a lot of staff in buildings that are, are having these experiences, and you're using your resources as efficiently as possible. So, the, the simplified financing cycle, the board approves the resolution that we're recommending, the state board approves the bond request, and there begins an ongoing education of the electorate on what we're doing, right? Why we're doing it, why we're, why we're bringing this to the voters. An election on two twenty-five of twenty-five. If the is, answer is yes, then bonds are issued, purchased by investors, those proceeds are used to start construction, hopefully as early as summer of two thousand twenty-five, and the district starts to make those payments. And at some point, in the future, not today, in the future, another board will consider another bond issue at some point, right? This is probably not a, a one-and-done kind of thing, but for this board today, we're talking about this Step One of the Facilities Master Plan. So, again, the board does not, is not deciding on a yes or no on the bond. It is deciding to allow the voters to decide in February of twenty-five, right? It's basically like handing the voter a seed and letting them decide if they want to plant it or not, right? And when you're talking about planting a tree, when's the best time to plant a tree? Not today, it was, you know, some number of years ago, but the second best is to plant it now. So, that's what we're proposing and recommending for the board tonight is hand the seed to the voter, right? And approve Resolution two thousand twenty-four seven, authorize and calling for a special bond election to be held on February twenty-fifth of twenty-five in an amount not to exceed four-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars for the purpose of financing improvements outlined in Step One of the Facilities Master Plan.
So, I, thank you. That was great, Susan. And I just want to recap because, especially for, for the public and, and, you know, the staff and everybody, we get to this point, and staff, we, we do a lot of talking, right? This is, you know, this is the plan, this is what we're doing. But I want to lift up that this is, this is your plan. And so, I'm going to, I'm going to list off way, and ways in which this is, this is based on feedback from the board, and I'm not going to call out who said what, but these are the things that you all have told us matter. We don't want a tax increase, right? But we do want a data-driven plan that's based on community feedback. Check, right? We want equity in our school district. And if you look at the map, you know, it's north and south, and it's east and west, right? It's Coleman and Truesdale. It's, it's investing in all kids, every kid all across the district. We want to meet the needs of our community. We have early childhood, we have future-ready Center for Trades, right? We're, we're responding to meeting the needs of the community. New schools are more comfortable and more inviting and better experience for kids. We've heard that from, from board members. We want to use local vendors, that's, we aren't to that point yet, but we'll, we'll get to that point once it starts. We want to become more operationally efficient, right? You, you have told us that, so this is what we're doing, right? Newer and fewer, we're able to, to become more efficient as a district. We've been asked to, you know, try to tap every resource we can. So, we found, not we, the team found a fifteen-million-dollar grant that we were awarded. We found out last, at the last meeting. Great work to the team to get that and to hit, you know, to, to be able to, to continue and invest using other things, not just tax dollars. Community schools, we've heard about that from, from board members, and we aren't, we aren't quite to the, to the point of looking at, you know, specific plans of, you know, where rooms go and all that kind of stuff, but that, that point will come. And, and just generally believing in, you know, this is, this is, I will call out Ernestine. And Ernestine, you know, in the back of my head, I hear her talking about the greater community, right? As our kids go, the whole community goes. Our kids deserve this, our kids are worth it, our kids are deserving of great facilities, just like, just like every other kid is. And our kids are growing up within the greater community, and it's an opportunity for our community to say, we believe in you, kids, we, we appreciate you. I know, you know, West High is a great example, those athletic facilities that they got in the last bond issue, there's true pride that those kids take in those facilities. The, the, the community said, you're worth it. You're worth a new swimming pool and a new wrestling room and a new basketball, you know, court and everything else. You are worth it regardless of what zip code you come from in our district. So, I just want to make sure, you know, you, you all have done a lot of hard work, but you all have done a lot of hard work, and we've been listening, we've been taking in this feedback, and I believe have a plan that can reshape our school district and be really exciting for our kids and our families. So, with that, I'll pass it off.
Thank you, Kelly. Hazel?
My question has to do with the bond repayment, if there, there would, would be a new bond. When would that begin?
So, I, I, well, when we, obviously, we've not had great discussions on the timeline of, right, because there's a lot of steps between selling bonds, right? We have to get approval for the bonds first. But you can envision if we are selling sometime after the election and then setting up a payment plan, we could be paying as early as fall of twenty-five into spring of twenty-six, depending on if those are March payments or April, right? A lot of those bond payments are only made once or twice a year, right? They're big, they're big payments. Interest may be, you know, e- every six-month with a principal payment annually. So, a lot of it will depend on what type of issue it is. If we do several issues, right, maybe we sell some now and we sell some two years from now. That's what two, the two thousand eight bond issue did. So, I think we'll want to look at, you know, interest rates, we're going to want to discuss that with our, we have Bond Counsel, we have a Bond Advisor, they'll basically steer us on all those questions.
Okay. Thank you.
I really hope this board can appreciate this moment tonight to truly understand the historical spot that you are in at this moment. There's only been three bond issues in the last fifty years, and the forces have drawn us seven individuals together on one night to affect many generations to come. This is a historical and a generational investment that we are considering tonight, and I've been so proud to serve with each of you as we've gone step-by-step over this summer. Through the natural progress, progression of time, our school district will need to decide whether or not we want to put resources into aging buildings or whether we want to continue our momentum on improving student outcomes. The choices have now come to roost where we have to decide whether or not we're going to put money into our students or whether we're going to put bill, bill, money into our aging buildings. That's not to say we don't love our aging buildings, because we do. I'm a Wichita, I purposely wore my Wichita lapel button tonight because I think I, that I understand that this community loves their quaint, small neighborhood school. And this bond issue, if we vote tonight, will help protect our high-performing neighborhood schools. If we do not make this investment, then we will have some tougher decisions down the road, which will make it tough. We must maintain the momentum we have achieved in improvement of student outcomes. Have they been perfect? No. Have there been hiccups along the way? Yes. But the momentum is there, and I think our teachers tonight talking about FastBridge, it shows that that is there, and we have a grand opportunity to keep that momentum going. And I'm not asking you tonight to vote on whether you approve a bond or don't approve a bond. I'm asking you to approve, trusting our public to understand what kind of a generational and historical investment we are asking people to, to do. This is a fiscally responsible plan as well. We're doing this without a mil levy increase. Delaying investment now and kicking this can down the road will only make the decision on how to handle, again, the decision on how to handle our resources in a reactionary way. And what I would like to really leave with you, and, and I hope you'll truly hear what I'm, I'm, I'm trying to say, our kids deserve this investment. They deserve the same opportunities and the same excited, exciting, innovative things that some, some of our surrounding communities have as well. I don't know how we can at times praise the facilities at our friendly neighbors' school districts and then come back and be satisfied when we walk into substandard situations. We have to show the community that this Board of Education is committed one-hundred percent to our kids, to their future, and let's make a historical investment. And even if you don't agree that this is a historical moment or, or we should not make a generational investment, let's leave it up to the community to decide whether they agree or disagree after we spend the next several months giving them the information about this. I just want to say, I've, it's, it's been a pleasure, and I'm very proud to serve with the six of you, and I'm excited about the opportunity to again show our kids that they deserve the very best, and we're going to make it happen some way or the other. So, I, I appreciate you listening to me on that.
Any other? I'll make a motion that, oh, Melody?
You cleared the, you cleared-
Did I clear it?
You cleared the board on that.
I apologize.
You cleared it. So, that's saying that, I can't speak for everyone, Stan, but the words that you have spoken are definitely, I'm in concert with, and I really do appreciate being able to be at this momentous moment for USD two-five-nine with the other board members as well as staff, as well as students that are in our district. So, you know, this is a rare occasion, and we happen to be the ones that have this opportunity to do good for every student in our district. The only thing that I want to add is something that is going to be a mantra that you're going to continue to hear from me because of my care for the students, for the teachers, for our communities. And actually, Superintendent Beilefeld has already mentioned it when he so graciously included all of the different comments that have come from board members as well as probably individuals, and one of them is community schools. I, I think that because of this momentous occasion that we find ourselves at, because of this opportunity, it is rare, this opportunity, that not only are we going to look at how we can bring equity in terms of building structures, in terms of amenities inside of those buildings, in terms of technology that's, that is actually accessed in those buildings, not only can we do that, but we can also look at being able to bring in other resources collaboratively as well as partnering with our community, with other entities, with other organizations, so that what is evidenced at not only the federal level, because it's a program that is funded at that level, but what is evidenced in programs that are- in programs that are actually in our schools, right here in the state of Kansas, shows that this integrated form of resource building can actually create better outcomes for our students. And that's what we really want to see, as well as the equity and the amenities that we are educating our students in. So, I simply wanted to add that, because quite honestly, it is hugely important to me that as we are looking at bonding 40, $450 million, looking at actually putting it to the people, where the people of the city of Wichita, the District of USD 259, can make that decision as to whether or not that's what we're going to be able to do. As we do it, I want us to always keep in mind that we really, at the crux of it, want our students to have not only the very best, but to be able to have that within their grasp. And I think that in order to do it, it, we can't continue to solely educate in the manner that we have, which has been the best of our ability. But I think that there are just some other, other implementation and methods that are proven, and one of them is going to be community schools. So, you'll hear this again, because it is very, very important to me. Once again, I appreciate you, Stan, I appreciate all of the board members and all of the work that has been done to put together the master plan that we've already supported, to actually look at how it is that we can act on and fulfill a promise to our district, and that is to best educate every student, that, so that every student is ready. So, thank you.
Thank you, Melody. And I mentioned that it was the fiscally responsible plan. The most recent bond issue that was passed in Sedgwick County was for a school district with, for $58 million that had a total student population of 3,200. That ended up being, per capita, an ask for 18,125. Ours is far more modest, it's 450 million for nearly 47,000 students, which is a ask for 9,782. So, this is about half of what the last ask of the taxpayers in Sedgwick County was. It shows how large of a school district we are. But I do want the public to understand that it's a, that the board worked on a, from the premise that we needed this to be a modest first step, and to show the public that we can deliver on these promises. So, with that, I move that the board approve the Resolution 2024-07, authorizing and calling for a special bond election to be held on February 25th, 2025, in the amount, in the amount not to exceed 450 million for the purpose of financing improvements outlined in Step 1 of the Facility Master Plan.
I'll second.
Moved by Stan and seconded by Julie. Discussion? If not, I'll call for the vote. Motion carries 6-1 with bond in the negative. I really appreciate everyone's efforts in this. This has been a heavy lift for the whole summer, and we are now stepping into the next phase, phase, which is the community engagement. And I know each of you will double down your work on that area as well. We'll take a 10-minute break and be back at 7:45. Convening? Patrick, next item, please.
So, sorry, no, this is actually a continuation, we haven't even switched items yet. So, we, we decided to, I think I explained to you guys this morning, to go ahead and vote for the resolution. And now that the resolution has passed, we're going to talk about the Wolpert Plan, and what, what they're going to provide for us pending your approval tonight. So, Luke, take it away.
All right, good evening again. As the Director of Wichita Public Schools, I don't know that anyone, there's anyone in the, in the city that's more excited about the board's vote tonight, so I just want to say that, although maybe, maybe Susan might be a little bit more excited, but if she is, it's not much more than me. But obviously, you know, the excitement now, we need to translate to educating our public, and sharing with our public how important this work is, and, and hopefully getting a yes vote. And so, in this work, we have chosen Wolpert to partner with, and they are ideally suited for this work, having worked through our master planning, done, did great work there, have intimate knowledge of our school district, and a really deep background working nationally in a lot of other school districts with a, with a great deal of success. School district's very similar to us. So, really excited to continue the partnership and continue working with them. And tonight, we've got Scott and Jennifer here, and they're going to present more about their approach, and their, specifically how they're going to, how they're going to do, manage this for us. So, I'll turn it over to them.
Evening. So, hi, my name is Scott, and probably a new face for you guys from the Wolpert Cooperative Strategies team. And that's because this is the side of the house that I usually work in. With that said, I was here on the very first day that you guys did hire us, so I've been following the master plan through this entire process. But we put people in front of you that are good at what they do, and so my history is in construction planning. And so, right now, tonight, we're really going to talk to you about how we bridge this time from this moment, master plan's been done, to the bond. And there's a lot of work to do. And there's really two distinct scopes that we see need to be done at this point. So, we're going to talk about that. I wanted to put this first slide up, just because you guys alluded to it tonight. And we know buildings don't come to board meetings to present their case, which you've all heard. And so, we wanted just a few stats where you can see here. The National Center of Education Statistics shows that in buildings that are older, or have greater needs, I should say, you see a big jump in performance. In this case, I cited your math scores there. Norfolk, Norfolk Public Schools, we did a project last year in Virginia, and we had a statistician come in and look at all the data. And what they found, that the greater the FCI, so the condition of the building, so the more that was in need, the higher rate of absenteeism they had. Before my work with Cooperative Strategies, I ran the Colorado Department of Education for 10 years, and was the Executive Director of their Office of Capitol Construction. We've had a pretty big, robust program for about a decade out there now. And so, I did poll from our department, some stats. And so, each year, they have to report to the legislature on if buildings and all the investment they've made is impacting performance. And so, that bottom right there shows that they take a sampling of the highest performing schools from a performance framework standpoint, and the lowest, and see if there's any correlations. And you can see that the age of the building, in the higher performing schools, it's a newer building. The condition of the building is in a better condition. And then that last metric, which is the adequacy, in addition to the condition of the building, just the adequacy of the spaces, how they're equipped for today's education, that's what that last metric is. And so, you can also see that the higher performing schools had a, a greater adequacy standard. So, just something to know that, that when we talk a lot about buildings and do they impact education, we do know that teachers and everything else does impact it, but the building does play a role in that as well. All right, so moving to the next slide here, the first piece I'm going to talk about is just the steps you need to take, in our opinion, to make this master plan implementable in the bond. And then Jennifer is going to talk about how you communicate that out. And I will say, Jennifer is with a company called Creative Entourage. We partner with them all the time at this phase of our projects across the country. And so, you said this is a, basically a once-in-a-lifetime event for you guys, third time in a long time. We do this every year, sometimes multiple times a year. And so, very familiar with how to make these bonds implementable, and how to communicate them out, and things that we hear come up a lot, as far as the education around it, and, and what the next steps are. So, Luke is going to, wherever he went here, he's going to drop an expanded version of this timeline, if you want to just see a little more about what each of these bullets mean. I didn't think we needed to go through that tonight. But really, there's a lot of steps that you need to take now to mobilize and tactically make sure that the master plan and all the projects that were identified can actually be done for the dollars that you've now approved. And so, there's a lot of steps. We're going to review the bond goals, look at some bond language, make sure that all the projects are established and set up in a way that you can manage them. We know you have a planning committee, but we also like to establish a, basically a facilities committee. And so, that is going to be a public branch that will help make sure that the bond is progressing in the way it should. Typically, we suggest that those folks are part of your procurement team. So, when you're hiring folks and setting the standards in your language for if you want a certain amount of local tradesmen, if you want a certain amount of this, or type of, just feedback into your projects, they're that group that helps manage that. Then beyond that, we've got the Funding Action Plan. So, that's really looking now at every single project, and establishing budgets for every single project, making sure that there's allowances in place, contingencies in place. If there's different levels of due diligence that need to occur, if we're raising a site and rebuilding it, look at the dirt, make sure we don't need to import any in. Look at the hazardous program there and see if we have to do additional testing for hazardous abatement and things like that. So, there's a lot of due diligence at the very specific action level to occur. After that, we'll establish master schedules, master budgets, develop a comprehensive phasing plan, so the community knows when things are occurring, if we're moving kids around or stepping in different phases, what will happen and when it'll happen, and have a prime source of information for all that. And then, at the same time, if you do want to hit the ground running in February, and that does make sense, you can capture that first construction season. And we know that as time goes on, things get more expensive. So, start developing your procurement standards now. Start thinking about how you want to deliver on your projects, and then possibly run RFPs to say, we've got our team selected, so that they can start as soon as those bonds are sold. That allows you, especially in the spring, to go through a design process, go through the permitting process, and have everything ready, so you can actually capture some of that timeframe there. And, you know, that's essentially all the work that needs to be done from a tactical mobilization standpoint from now until February. As you see up there, I did have that through April, so you may be asking about that. You can take those last steps there, that March and April, and really ratchet them back. They're not time-dependent, it's just you wouldn't do them necessarily any sooner than the last few months, because then folks would be sitting around for a while. So, you can really flex on those last pieces there. With that, I'll turn it over to Jennifer to talk more about the engagement and how we articulate this bond.
Sounds like a plan. Thank you all for having me here tonight. My name is Jennifer Volk. I'm one of the two owners of, as Scott mentioned, a company called Creative Entourage, and we get to work with the team from Wolpert on a lot of different bond communications and things like that with different communities. So, I wanted to start with just a few of our successes. I personally am committed to helping school districts connect with their communities, and have made that pretty much my life's work. About for the past 20 years or so, I have been working with school districts, fire districts, community colleges, to help them connect and help their communities understand some of the challenges that they're facing. We have people on our team who have been doing this for 40 and 50 years, and have kind of taught me everything I know as well. In the past five years alone, we have about an 85% success rate, over $2 billion in bond funding, about a billion in operating funding, and we've been able to work with over 100 public entities, and working to communicate about these issues to their communities. So, the question is, how did all of those get to the end? And so, from where you're sitting today, how do we help them be successful, in making sure that their community is informed, and making sure that as many voters as possible have a chance to be informed voters going into your February election? So, through the years, we've developed four key questions. And so, you look back at those wins and those losses, and you say, what went well, what did we need to work on? And these are four things, that if we can answer yes to these, we have a really good shot when you're on the ballot. And so, I'm going to go through those a little bit, starting with, do we have a fighting chance based on research? And I know that you've spent quite a bit of time over the past year and a half, two years, on hearing from your community, gathering input. You've had some surveys, you've had some different information out there. What we'd like to do is do one more final survey, and really learn, what does the community know about this plan? What do they not know about the plan? Where are those gaps? And really, where do we need to message, and what do we need to let people know about? We're recommending a scientific telephone poll, and so you'll have good statistical data to make some decisions moving forward. I looked back at some of your survey data, and you did have a lot of responses. But when you look at a community of your size, a lot of times, those are people who may come to meetings, and they're people that are already engaged with your schools, they're already interested. And so, how do we make sure that we're communicating with them as well, and maybe what do they not know about yet? Another thing is that messaging is really, really important. So, this is a sample from a recent school district survey that we've done. And if you take a look at question A, you'll notice, we've gone five years since the district has had tax increase. Unless this proposal passes, we'll sacrifice all of the recent progress that has been made in our schools. About a 45% agree. If you look at the right, with the more positive tone and the more positive messaging, with the continuing to improve our schools, you're up to almost 68%. So, just that slight difference in how we word something can influence what people think about the proposal. Do they call it a performing arts center, or a theater? Do we call it CTE, or do we call it career training? What are those words that we need to be using that people understand? And in addition, what do they not know about yet? And so, that's the other part that the survey will help tell us, is what are those gaps that we need to make sure, over the next few months, that we make sure that people have those questions answered, and that we're providing that information. When we looked at the project for your district, what we'd like to do is a blend of a telephone and an online survey. We typically do 30 to 35 questions. That is about how long we can keep people on the phone. They, when I started doing this a while back, these questionnaires were 60 to 70 questions. Through the years, we've had to cut them back, just to get our completion rates where they need to be. So, that will be developed from the plan, and also a series of four or five input sessions that we'll work with your administration to put together. Those input sessions, again, tell us what people are hearing, are there any underlying issues that we need to be aware of, and make sure that we're really starting off with some good, stable footing. The 300 random sample telephone will be done using cell phone and landlines, and then we'll do an opt-in online survey that everyone can participate in, that also serves as a communications tool for you. Next up, we have, do you have a bulletproof plan? And from what I've seen, you've done a lot of research, you've gotten a lot of community input, and you have a lot of the data, and the facts are in place. So, I think we can put a check mark there. The third thing people don't often think of, and that is making sure that we have our internal unity. Is everybody on board with this? Do we have our teachers on board? Do we have our administrators on board? Student organizations, with as many high schools as you have, that's a large voting contingent. We need to make sure that those students are in the know and on board with this as well. And then also you as a board, making sure that everybody's on the same page and knows where we are moving forward. The final piece is really going to be hitting the ground running, January, February, to conduct an outstanding outreach effort. Now, it's very, very important, from this day forward, you are in campaign mode, and there's a lot of laws and ethical restrictions that come with that as a school district. So, our team can help you navigate that, and make sure that the district is only producing information. You cannot advocate for or against the proposal, but it is your duty to provide information. What are the projects? How much will this cost? How will it impact student learning? All of those different things. If a vote yes committee decides to form, that is a completely separate entity that cannot involve any district resources, any tax dollars, any of those things. And so, that has to be separate. And so, we'll make sure to help you navigate those waters, and provide some do's and don'ts, and work with your attorneys, and make sure that everything is clear and legal from that perspective when you're communicating. When we took a look at the process, there's a five-step process to get us to Election Day. So, step one, what we'd like to start with, is just a community information program. This messaging may shift a little bit after we get the survey results, but with your timeframe, I think we need to get some communication together soon. And so, how do we make sure that that is consistent? We make sure we have all of our facts consistent, everything is the same, and people are making sure that we have the right information out there about the proposal. This will come in a variety of different methods. We'll want to make sure that all of our pieces are bilingual, and make sure that we have access in multiple languages, and really let people have the opportunity to participate and learn about the proposal. Also, in the fall, open up your buildings again. I know you've done this, but let's- I know you've done this, but let's open them up, let's let people come in, let's ask them questions, and have them have the opportunity to tour some of your schools. And there's even a potential to do some community engagement workshops and a chance for the community to come and dialogue and ask questions and really learn more about that plan. Step two would be that public opinion survey that I just talked about. I think, looking at now, we'll want to do that in October, November, and we'll talk with administration to figure out all of the details for the timing of that. Come back to you with a report in late November, early December, with those survey results and any additional things that we may have heard through the communication and the engagement this fall. Assuming things move forward from there, again, we'll work with you to inform the community about the proposal, those opportunities to vote. So, we talked about how there will be mail-in opportunities, absentee opportunities, and then in-person on the 25th. And so, making sure people know that there's an election. With this being in February, it may not be on people's radar if they don't have kids in your schools, and so, how do we make sure that everybody can be an informed voter? In addition, that vote yes committee may form, but that needs to stay separate. And then, we would end with Election Day. So, I did go through this pretty quickly. We did put together just two simple timelines, depending on where the board had decided to go this evening, and so, as you can see, with the February election, we would be looking at that community information development here in September and October, survey October, November, and do that report in November, and then your informational communications from December through February.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the pacing of that report. That was very thorough, but gave us all the information right up front. Thank you very much. Nock?
Yeah, so you mentioned a 85% success rate. I'm curious, in terms of, in the school districts, where a bond issue failed, just like, what were some, like, those key defining characteristics on what they did? In other words, like, I would love to, like, see some case studies on, like, what exactly happened in those school districts, what they did after that, like, if they tried again, or...
Right, absolutely. I'm touching on a few. I can think back, messaging was off, so we'll have the survey, it will come back. Somebody may say, "I really want to say it this way," or "I think we should talk to you about this." The survey's telling us this. I know that sounds minor, but that made a big difference in two that I can think of. There were some other ones where the community just didn't believe in the plan. And so, there were, it was really top-down, rather than having that community input from the bottom up, and people are very resistant to that. They have to have the chance to discover the needs and know what's going on within the schools, like you've been doing over the past year, and those are the ones that seem to struggle the most.
And then, I'm curious, like, for the surveying, like, what are some sample questions that you normally ask folks?
It will really vary. So, we will want to ask them to prioritize needs. So, let's look at all of those needs that you found in your facility study. What do people prioritize? We do ask the straight question of, "Would you be willing to support a zero-tax-rate-change bond proposal on the February ballot?" So, we'll ask that. We'll also find out if people prioritize maintenance of things. So, do we need to update our infrastructure? You have billions of dollars invested in your buildings. Do we need to protect that investment? What are those types of things to really get at what people think about your schools?
And then, I think this might be a Kelly question. In terms of the school visits and just like have, like, the open houses, like, how soon could that happen?
Yeah, I mean, soon. We've created some, I don't want to offend Rob, but rudimentary videos of some things, really just showing differences between, you know, Ortiz Elementary, new cafeteria, what that's like when you serve lunch versus another school without a new cafeteria, and what it's like to serve lunch in there. So, the experience of kids, even in those environments. I created a pretty cool video from Truesdale, the walk to lunch for a sixth-grade student, and it's, I don't know, a quarter-mile. I mean, it's insane how far that kid has to walk through the halls to get to lunch on those days. So, we've started to do some engagement that way, but yeah, I believe, now that, you know, we've got the green light, we're a go, I mean, I think we can start those tours and those visits soon.
Thank you, Nock. Melody?
Thank you. So, I'm looking at some of your stats, and you've got $2 billion in bond funding. So, what's a typical bond that you have worked on that was funded? This is almost a half a billion.
It really varies. There have been some that have been as small as 10 to 15 million. Those are typically not ones we work on too much. In most cases, they're either near 100 million or more. There are some districts that also supplement with reserve funding and capital funding, so they're combined. Recently, we did pass a $400 million project last cycle. So, sometimes, it's not as much necessarily the amount of the ask, it's making sure that we are communicating the need correctly to the community and making sure that we understand those different audiences that you have. And I think with a community as diverse as this, we need to make sure that we are communicating with those different audiences and making sure that those voices are represented through the process.
And so, now, you've guided me to the other question that I have, and that is, so, if some are as small as 10 or 15 million, how many half-billion-dollar bond issues have you worked on?
We have done three or four that are that large. There are a few districts, what they have done is they've actually gone through operating. And so, they've done operating rate increases that have funded billions, and they just decided to go that route rather than bonds, they went through operating funds. And so, those have been our larger ones, outside of a couple of the recent bond issues.
And in terms of diverse communities, what's typical for you? Because this, our district is extreme, is very diverse.
So, we've worked, it runs the gamut. And so, the district that I just mentioned, with the 180 million, they did 400 million in funding. They are about 40% Hispanic. It was over 100,000 registered voters, declining student population. The similarities were kind of interesting when Scott and I were talking through it. So, there's that one. We're currently working for a district in Nebraska that is predominantly Hispanic. Very, they have a lot of challenges ahead that we're looking at. So, it really, we work in lots of different, from rural to urban, just depending on the community.
Sure. So, when you're looking at that diverse community and messaging, online is not always going to get it. I mean, it's just, it's not the typical way that diverse communities are going to access this information. So, I noticed that at the very beginning of this process, you're doing, did I hear this correctly, 300 telephone and online? It's anyone can participate? And the purpose for that? And how does that relate to the information that you're going to gather, the barometer of the community? We're half of, what is it, half a million in our, what do you call, our unified area? 300 calls? I'm just trying to understand that.
There's a, there's a whole science behind that, and I would need to talk to the two PhD political scientists on our team. But it, the 300 number allows us to get to a 4.9% margin of error. And so, when you see the polls on TV and things like that, what we want to do is get within that margin of error. We used to do 400 and 500 sample. We can't get that anymore. People just don't answer their phones.
No, they don't.
No, they don't. And so, that's where that online piece can come in handy. And so, what we can do with that online survey, there's a lot of districts that aren't even large enough to do phone surveys anymore. And so, what we do is we model that data. And when I say model, is that women tend to take surveys more than men. Not sure why. Parents tend to take surveys more than non-parents. Our data team can then model that data to match your demographics. When we do the telephone survey and the online survey in a district, we're finding that data is matching almost exactly. And so, that tells us with that online data, we're getting good numbers that we can put some weight in. The advantage to the online data as well is it allows us to get into some more demographic groups and pull out some of those cross tabs to see what people are thinking, and if there's different audiences we need to talk with. The other thing that we'd like to do as far as reaching those audiences is put together a community committee that is representative of your community. We know engagement, we know communications, we know opinion research, you know your community, and your community knows your community. And so, how do we bring that together to make sure that that messaging is spot-on and that we're reaching everyone?
Sure, sure. Likewise, not only reaching the community at large, because our community at large does not necessarily reflect who it is that we actually educate, so how do you incorporate? How do you, how do you reach them? Because they're, they're very important.
I think we just need to make sure we don't miss that mark when we put that team together. And so, I think when we put that team together, and also, when we look at those survey results, let's make sure that we have benchmarks set for certain demographic groups to make sure that, okay, boy, we're missing the mark here, and we need to make sure to do some further outreach to that community. We had one that we were just doing, and for some reason, the senior citizen population was really low. I think we had 20 or 30 responses. It was not where we needed it to be. So, we worked with the superintendent and the communications team and just really did some specific outreach to seniors, got that up to about 500 in about a week. And so, the goal would be to keep an eye on those numbers and say, "Okay, how do we make sure we reach them and where are we missing the mark?"
And how do you, I think this is probably my final question, but how do you weight the initial information that you're going to gather from the telephone calls, from the online information or survey? With your step one, develop community information program, which, open houses, building tours, you have community engagement workshops where you actually have community that's going to be there in person. How, how do you weight the information you are getting at the front end of this with what you're going to gather, person-to-person, face-to-face?
We always put the most weight in that telephone survey, because historically, that tracks closest with the election results. So, that is the one that we put the most weight in. But, that engagement work that we do in Phase One will help inform the questionnaire, and it will help inform some of the information that we are testing through that. But when we look at messaging, we put a lot of weight in that phone survey.
The engagement work is informed by the survey?
In this case, it's going to have to be based on the work that you've already done.
So, those surveys?
So, those surveys and that data that has been gathered.
Right. Okay. I don't have any other questions right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, this is a consent agenda item. There's no vote asked for at this time. So, if there's no further questions, thank you all for great information. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, public communications.
We have no speakers signed up for tonight for general public education, public communication. So, Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, strategic plan, Goal One, progress monitoring report.
All right. So, welcoming Lauren Hatfield and Amanda Scharzl to the table. As our strategic plan has set out for us, we have goals, and we want to track progress toward those goals and make sure that we are making progress using good strategies that are research-based and are accountable to you all for what we're doing. So, this is our first one of these. These are intended to be bite-sized chunks of data that we will, so they'll be fairly short presentations, but more frequent than what we've done in the past. In the past, we've done kind of the annual data dump, which is like 45 minutes, and you haven't heard about it for a year, so it can be kind of hard to remember. You know, Lauren loves her TLAs, her three-letter acronyms. So, we'll try to make sure we keep you up to speed on the acronym, so you know everything that's going on, so.
Welcome.
Hello again. We're glad to be here. Dr. Hatfield and I get to update you on progress for Goal Number One in our strategic plan. Our deputy superintendent shared some data with you, I believe, last board meeting, and our job tonight is to really focus on the interim goals for elementary, middle, and high school related to this school. So, I'm going to kick us off with just reminding us where we're going. So, in our strategic plan right now, our academic goal is to increase our graduation rate from 79.2 to 85% by 2029. What that looks like across elementary, middle, and high is very different. So, for elementary, we are going to decrease the percent of students who score Level One on the state assessment from 47.6 to 45.6 by May of 2025. We do look at Level Ones, decreasing Level Ones. We've kind of told that story. We know a student who scores a Level Two, Three, or Four on the state assessment has a better chance than a student who scores a Level One. That's where we chose to put our efforts. Secondly, in middle school, to decrease the percentage of students, again, scoring a One from 67.3 to 65 on their eighth-grade math state assessments, and in high school, increasing the number, or percentage, I'm sorry, of unique students. This is not my language, high school, so bear with me. Unique students scoring a 21 or higher on the ACT or scoring a silver or higher on the ACT work keys from 34.2 to 37.7, again, by spring of 2025. So, what that looks like for elementary, the next question is really, where are we now? So, I know that you've seen some screener data with FastBridge that Deputy Superintendent Alvarez has shared with you. This is really our Level Ones for the past three years, for the past three springs, in particular for third grade. So, if you look at the spring of '22, you'll see both the percentage of students who did score Level One on the reading state assessment and how many students that is. Below that is spring of '23, and below that, spring of '24. So, between spring of '22 to spring of '24, we have decreased that by almost 6% overall. So, we have some momentum here, and especially with the number of kids in a district our size, those percentages sometimes seem small. But when you put it in perspective of the number of unique students, who means that we moved out of Level One into another level, it's a pretty big deal for us to have 5%, 6% increase growth, or in this case, decrease. One of the things we wanted to highlight is strategies for continued progress. So, one of the first things you'll see is professional learning alignment. What this means for us, for our teachers, is letters. You heard both of our kindergarten teachers share with you that letters has definitely impacted their practice and what they're doing with their kids. So, the majority of our staff, just for the board's information, are moving into Volume Two of Letters, which is all about reading comprehension. We also align what we give our principals, assistant principals, instructional coaches at their learning opportunities, and we have additional opportunities as well. So, both Sheila and Lindsay talked about kindergarten learning nights. So, we look at our data and we say, "Where do we need to really get some momentum?" And our team in Learning Services puts together those opportunities. Most are optional, but paid, and we do have really great turnout of teachers. Our second strategy is to strengthen core instruction. So, again, going back to our routines that are in place and making sure that everyone involved in instruction understands the science and the art of teaching. And lastly, the last strategy is to appropriately progress monitor and respond through intervention strategies to students who are or are not making progress towards our goals. So, those three are, there's many other strategies, but those three are three that we have heavily invested in and will continue to do so. All right. Let's switch to eighth-grade math cap. So, you will see very similar graphs, charts, points, as you saw in Scharzl's presentation, Amanda Scharzl's presentation. So, let's talk a little bit about the high number two to start with. This is a new interim goal for middle schools. We have been talking about numeracy, but how we've been measuring student numeracy skills has been very different for the past several years than this new interim goal. So, in the past, I've came to you and talked about, hey, we want to increase the number of students who are ready to take Algebra I in high school, and we've measured that by decreasing the percent of kids in foundations of algebra. But the math cap, which is what we're measuring right now, doesn't have anything to do with whether kids are in foundations of algebra. We've measured foundations of algebra percentage in the past based on if they are high-risk on screener data and they're two or more grade levels behind their diagnostic data, which has nothing to do with the state assessment. So, this is a new measurement of an interim goal for certain. We've been talking about numeracy, but the measurement of how we assess our progress in numeracy, this is new for us. So, it is nice to see that there has been decrease, even though we've been measuring our progress on this school differently in secondary for the last two years than Amanda and her team, that they've been so letters-focused, and they've been zeroed in on that third-grade proficiency for several years, and it's super cool to see their big gains, because that tells us what's possible for our big gains when we focus on that as a measure, just like the elementary side has focused on that as a measure. So, I wanted to bring that forward. So, let's talk about our strategies as well. Professional learning alignment, which you heard from Amanda, but it also says curriculum resources and proficiency skills. And the reason it says that is we have a brand-new math curriculum for sixth grade through alge- brand-new math curriculum for sixth grade through Algebra II, which you all approved last spring sometime. So we have to do a lot of training for staff on what is this new curricular resource? How do you best optimize it? How do you teach core with this? How do you teach intervention with this? Because we also have a new diagnostic tool, which is called iExcel. So not only do we have a new core curriculum, but we also have a new intervention in place for math. So there's a lot of new in the middle school math world, and so we have to do a ton of professional learning alignment so that our teachers can catch up to speed, so that we can optimize the use of the resource effectively. We've vetted the resource. We're really excited about it, but it also takes time to get used to something new. We didn't see improvement right away when we first started doing letters because you've got to learn it. And then you've got to, and it's got to be a part of how you teach, and then once it's a part of how you teach, boom, 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 you see these big gains. That's what we want to do in math, but we're probably not going to see those massive jumps in the same way we see in letters. We will see them eventually if we stay the course and we keep progress monitoring, but we're not going to see that 6%, 7% drop. If we do, let's all celebrate together, but it's not something that we expect to see initially because you've got to do a lot of training and learning before you're really ready to embed that every day without having to think really hard about it as a teacher for kids. So the second thing on there is intentional lesson planning. One, because we have a new curriculum. Two, we have to make sure that we're teaching to the cognitive level of the standard. When we don't teach to the cognitive level of the standard, then kids aren't going to learn to the cognitive level of the standard and thus they are not going to be able to get out of level one on the state assessment because they're not being taught to get high enough on the cognitive level of the standard. So it's super important that we intentionally lesson plan to make sure we're teaching at the level of rigor that the standard requires. So that's something that's super important. And then finally, much like Amanda mentioned, appropriate progress monitoring and response to intervention. What does that look like with a new core instructional component and a new intervention instructional component? So I would say we're probably, what, five-ish years behind. And how you measure numeracy is very different than how you measure literacy. It's a pretty good one-to-one match of screener data and literacy. It is not a good one-to-one match of screener data and numeracy because there are so many other components in numeracy. Because here's the other thing, the math test is a reading test first. It's important, and I'm glad all of you understand that, as our reading scores get better, that will help our math scores because you have to be able to comprehend what the question is asking you to even do the numeracy component. How you read that might be a little bit different, but every test is first a test of your reading skills and your comprehension. So that's why all of that goes together. And then just a quick note for both Amanda and I, the state assessment is changing. So we will come back to you in November with what does that mean for this? Because after these interim goals were decided, KST said, hey, we're going to change some things. And so we need to make a strategy and come back to you with a full and complete plan about what that's going to mean for how we're going to progress monitor this. We're still going to focus on literacy. We're still going to focus on numeracy, but how we progress monitor is going to have to look a little different because the state assessment's changing. So, all right, let's go to high school. All right. So what you see in front of you is data from '23 and '24, and that is the class of '23 and '24. Students take the ACT and the ACT work keys in different grade levels. So we need to track them through their class. So it's not the year '23, it's the class of '23. That's a difference in this data than the other two graphs that you saw. So unique tested students are number of students who took either the ACT, the ACT work keys, or both of them. But we don't count them twice if they took both tests, right? It's unique students and we only count them one time, whether they took one test, the other test, or both tests. The next number is number of students with a 21 or higher on the ACT. Now, that is not 349 out of 2,491 because some of that 2,491 only took the work keys. They did not take the ACT. If you're curious about a deeper dive into that data because you're a nerd, which is a term of endearment, I believe, there was in your packets some more data than what we're going to dive into right now that might answer some more questions. So feel free to look at that another time, but we want to keep it focused on this data right here. But I figured some of you might ask because it would be a question I would ask. So then the next number is number of students with a silver or higher on the ACT work keys. And then the next one is the number of students earning one-plus assets. So if you're like, hmm, why does 349 plus 556 not equal 758? Because there are some kids in both of the previous boxes and we don't want to count them twice. So that's unique kids. And then what you see at the end is just the percentage, 758 divided by 2,491 to get that percentage. So you can see pretty good growth between '23 and '24. I want to take a little longer to dive into this because you're probably pretty familiar with the ACT, but you might not be as familiar with the ACT work keys. And like Kelly said, if we only talk about this once a year, not very helpful. So let's lay the foundation now so that later, when I come back to you with ACT work key data, you're like, you're not like, tell me about this test again. What does this do? So we want to lay the foundation now. Just a couple of things on the ACT before we switch to work keys. You're probably pretty familiar with it. The reason 21-plus was chosen is that is a post-secondary asset, earning a 21 or higher is a post-secondary asset. Also, 21 is recognized nationally as this is the number, that if you scored this number, you can enter college without the need for remediation. So that's why the number there is 21. The ACT hasn't changed much since I took it, maybe even since you took it, but little note, it's changing. Starting in the spring of '25, the science section of the ACT is going to become optional. And so that will be a difference. They're also shortening the length of the test. They're taking number of questions down in each of the other three sections so that the total time of the test will go from just under three hours to just over two hours. So there's a lot of changes coming to the ACT. Now, it'll still be a nationally-normed test, which is good. It will still spit out numbers, you know, greater than 21 or higher, but there are changes coming, and it's not going to look the same as it's looked for however many years, starting in the spring of '25. It will actually not change for our kids that we pay for to test until spring of '26 because they're going to do it on national testing days this spring and then school-based testing days the following spring, when science will become optional. So just wanted to let you know. Then, let's talk about ACT work keys. So you're probably less familiar with that. So ACT work keys measures the foundational skills needed for workplace success. That's the job of that test. And kids, if they earn a bronze, or a silver, or a gold, or a platinum, can earn a National Career Readiness Certificate. It says, hey, this student is able to go into the workforce and be prepared to do a certain percentage of jobs based off of the skills they display. So what does it test? It tests applied mathematics. So can you do everyday math in context, right? It tests graphic literacy, which is can you read and interpret graphs and charts? And then it tests workplace documents. So can you read, comprehend, and respond to documents? So it might be a set of instructions. It might be an HR document, things like, that's what it's looking at, those three things. If you earn a bronze, they're saying you were prepared, you have the skills in those three areas to do 16, 1/6, 16% of the jobs. Then there's this huge gap because if you earn a silver, you're prepared to do 70% of the jobs. That's why silver is the level that it's set at, and silver is a post-secondary asset for the state of Kansas. A gold, you have the skills for 90% of the jobs, and then a platinum is 96% of the jobs. This isn't only for kids who are going into the workforce. A kid who scores a silver or higher, three times more likely to graduate from high school than a kid who doesn't. Kids who score silver or higher, seven times more likely to go to their sophomore year in college than a kid who doesn't. So we want more of our kids to take the work keys. So this ties into our strategies for continued progress. I'm going to start at the bottom and actually work up. We've only tested about 47% of our seniors in the work keys the last couple of years. Part of that is because our students and our staff don't necessarily know the value of the ACT work keys because it's easy to know ACT because it's been around for so long, so it's got this like mythical aura about it. But that's not true for ACT work keys because it's relatively new on the scene. So part of our strategy has got to be, here's why this is valuable for you, here's why you should take this, here's why you should take it seriously. Because if we're earning, if you go back a slide, Amanda, if we have 818 kids that got a silver or higher last year and we only tested 47% of our seniors, what could that number be if we tested a higher percentage of our kids? Because we offer this test for free to them in October. So seniors out there, there's going to be a testing day in October, and we need you to come to school. It's valuable for you. So we want to share the relevance and the value with our students and with our staff because it's just as important for our staff to know. Because if my teacher says, it's not important, you don't need to come, I'm not going to value it as a kid, right? And so we have to do a better job. And we, and I'll say me, need to do a better job making sure our adults understand why this is important so they can encourage our kids to come take this test. And then the top one is professional learning alignment. Again, it's reading comprehension. We need data and we need strategies to make our kids better readers in applied workplace-based documents and in non-applied workplace documents for the ACT. It's both about, they're both about reading comprehension. Reading comprehension helps us with the ACT and the ACT work keys, which in turn will help us with the graduation rate. All right. That is short, sweet, to the point, and we are happy to take any questions that you have.
Kathy?
This is so encouraging. After Gil's report last time, I really feel encouraged for our students. I have a few questions. Where are they? Darn it. I have it right here. Under the middle school, where are we now? For the new math that is coming out for the curriculum, has there been an in-service already for our educators to go through that or will there be one?
Yeah, so there were some optional ones last spring and last summer
Okay.
that a good number of our math teachers chose to attend. And then just last week, on District In-service Day, that was all focused around Core Math, which is the name of our new curriculum for sixth grade through Algebra II teachers.
Okay, that's great. And then, well, first of all, I think that these numbers are wonderful because we're going up. And I do have a question just for clarity. Are these goals that you are presenting to us based on pre-master plan or current situation?
Yes.
Okay.
To both. So part of it is you have to analyze historical data, say, what's a realistic goal, right? Because you want to make a goal that will stretch you, but you also want to make a goal that's possible. So if we would have gone up there and said, hey, we're going to have a 7% drop in eighth grade math, that's probably not going to happen, looking at historical data. So what's a goal that will really, really stretch us, but will also allow us to potentially meet the goal and not be so unrealistic? These are also things that we've been working on in the elementary and secondary world in some form and fashion for a while, but how we measure that might be different, which is really what's true for like eighth grade numeracy in this case.
I think what I'm asking, I didn't make myself clear, is there has been data that Kelly has brought to the board that states that the student can achieve higher grades in a newer building, and I'm asking, these wonderful numbers that you're showing me right now are actually taking place in the buildings that we currently have. Or are these projections based on, gee, I hope we're going to go into a new building and they're going to go up?
So she asked about the master plan?
Gotcha. I see. I see. They're based off of our kids right now, wherever they are.
Thank you.
Hazel?
My question has to do with the ACT testing. How many students total are we talking about? What's the percentage of students that are eligible to take this?
So we offer it to all juniors
All juniors?
in the district in February, Testing Day, where we say, hey, nobody else come to school, juniors, come to school, take this ACT, you pay nothing. It's a good testing environment. If you look on your extra data packets that were included, in '23, '24, we tested almost 70%. So 69.6% of the class of '24, which would have been juniors the year before, have an ACT score on file for us. ACT and ACT work keys data can be a little messy to work with because we only get the scores if the kid reports the scores to us.
Okay.
And then our research and assessment team has to go through, because it doesn't match to our student ID, they have to go through and figure out by name, birth date, who the kid matches to, to then disaggregate the data. So it does take us a while to really work with the ACT and ACT work keys data because it doesn't come to us as clean as data like from a state test or something like that would come to us.
So is it junior year the first year that they can take the test?
They can take it before their junior year. They can take it anytime, but that's the time we offer to pay for it for them and give them a free one.
Okay, thank you.
Melody?
Thank you. I'm digging just a little bit deeper. And so just a couple of questions about, let me make sure. So when looking at WPS ACT and ACT work keys data by schools, scoring 21 and above, you've got East High at right at 30%. You've got Northeast at, what, 30, almost 37%, 38.6. And then you've got Northwest at 33.6. So how are they marketed, I guess? Because what are the reasons for the discrepancies in these percentages from school to school to school? Let's say Southeast High, which was at 13% that actually scored that 21. And I know it's based on their actual abilities or how it is that they tested on that day, but I'm just wondering from a marketing perspective, does that come into play with the differences in percentages here?
So I wouldn't say that a marketing comes into play. I would think a lot of it's programmatic. Think about the three schools that you named, and they have some sort of college preparatory component program that is different than the other schools. And so do they get kids that have a higher percentage because there is an IB program?
Yeah.
Because there is an ECA program?
Right.
Yeah. So I wouldn't say it's-
And what's at Northeast?
It's a magnet. So they have their engineering and different, it's just different.
It's their speciality. They're choosing it.
Yeah.
It's not just-
And it's not on here, but something that's interesting is last year, it's almost an unbelievable statistic, we increased our district average ACT score by over a full point, which is exceptionally hard to do, to increase your ACT score by over a full point on average. So we had about the same number of percentage of kids earn a 21 or higher as we did the year before, but our average score rose as a district, which means we had way less kids scoring in the really low numbers and getting closer to that 21 number because we raised the percentage.
Yeah. 18 to 19, it looks like.
Yeah.
Okay. So then with, when looking at, let's take for instance- Okay, so then, with, when looking at, let's take for instance, now, and this is, once again, it's either or. Trying to make sure I'm, I'm following this. So, on, I think you've already answered it. It's programmatic. It's, it's still programmatic when you're looking at, yeah.
Yeah, so some of it's programmatic and some of it is, what are we doing for reading comprehension at all schools for all kids?
Okay, so there, you're getting to the crux that I wanted to get to. I just jumped over to programmatic. So, there is there, that is a, there is a discrepancy in what it is that we're, how we're teaching to it?
I, I wouldn't say there's a discrepancy. But, how we, how we address the whole is, how are we teaching reading comprehension at a tier-one level to all high school students? That helps all kids, no matter where they go. Are there some kids that are going to be differently prepared for a test like the ACT because of a program that they're in? Absolutely. How often do we sit for three-hour tests? Not very often. So, there's going to be some kids that are more prepared to take the test because they've sat through similar tests, similar testing environments before for other reasons, whether it's an IB test, a college final, et cetera. That's going to prepare you differently than not doing those things. But, we have to work on, which is why number one strategy on our list is, what's the reading comprehension strategies that we're teaching all kids? So that we can get as many kids as possible to be prepared as possible to take the test.
And then, I'm noticing that there's zero percents at a couple of buildings. And I can, you know, I can garner, but, and that's going to be Gateway. Let me go, yeah, Gateway and then Sowers. So, they, there's just no one, no student at that building that's going to earn an asset. I'm actually over in the, the column of earned assets.
Not this past year. We hope that's different. But, they, they also have a very small number of testers, right? When you have six kids total.
Yeah. Gateway. But, I don't know about Sowers.
They, they wouldn't earn the post-secondary asset for these two tests. But, there's, what, thirty different post-secondary assets? So, they, they may be able to do a work-based learning. They may be able to do a internship. There's, there's other ways that they can earn the post-secondary asset. But, for the test, you're right.
For the test.
I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Okay. Last, looking at the demographics on the third grade English, Language Arts, and then, eighth grade mathematics. I'm looking at extremely high numbers of level-one percentages for, well, all students for mathematics. And we are, you've given some reasoning behind that and then, what we're putting into place in order to change that incrementally. But, all students, there's sixty-seven point three percent of our students that are at a level-one percent. And this is eighth grade reading. And then, when we look at students with disabilities, it's ninety point eight, which is right at ninety-one percent. English learner students, eighty-six point nine, right at eighty-seven percent. Some understanding. African-American students at seventy-nine point six. Hispanic, seventy-two point two. White, five, fifty-six point five. Asian, forty-one point four, and so on. Foster care, ninety-one point eight. And homeless, seventy-eight point two. How are... That's the supermajority of our students. I know we're all aware. Tell me again what we're doing?
So, one, working on what is our core instruction? What does that look like with our new curriculum, Core Math? And then, two, what is our intervention in response to that? Which is now iXL, which is also new. So, we have to, the best intervention is strong tier-one instruction. If you have gaps in math, that's where, that's where that intervention component comes in. But, it can be hard to close that. And if we're not teaching to the cognitive level of the standard
Right.
at each grade level, then the gaps get bigger and bigger and bigger. Because if I don't teach to the cognitive level of the standard in seventh grade, then I'm now behind in eighth grade. And now, I'm not learning at the cognitive level of the standard in eighth grade potentially. And so, there's exponential growth on how far you can get behind if we're not teaching to the level of the standard that the kid needs standard for.
Right.
Yeah.
And yet, we're testing by the standard that we haven't taught to, so therefore-
Yeah, and I don't wanna say teachers aren't teaching, all teachers aren't teaching to the cognitive level of the standard. I just think it's-
I understand.
It's a, we need to examine, are we teaching to the cognitive level of the standard? To make sure we give our kids a chance. Because if we don't teach to the cognitive level of the standard, they don't have any chance
They don't.
to get out of level-one.
So, and I, and I would jump in too. I do think it's an important nuance because this plan is different than the last plan. It's very similar, but it's different. The last plan was third grade reading, graduation rate, CTE, and safety and security. This plan, although graduation rate is goal number one, we are breaking down for you what this looks like at each level, right? So, so there is infrastructure being bu, built, put in place. Math was not part of the last strategic plan. And I'm not judging that, saying that was right or wrong. I'm just saying, there's now an intention, intentionality between, behind this. So, we should start seeing grow, better numbers in these areas that, that, I mean, we, we have got a lot of potential to improve here. There's no doubt about it. But, part of, part of what you're digging into is, is good because that's kind of the intention of the plan, is that we are focused on academics and academic achievement and not just eight-year-olds who are third grade, how are they doing? It's really bigger and broader than that. Because we know without these, without Algebra I, they don't graduate, they don't, they can't do well in work keys, ACT, et cetera, et cetera. So, and, and I'm not saying that to Melody. I'm saying that to the group.
Sure.
This is part of a different kind of a plan that we're looking at
I love it.
and how we approach it.
Yeah. And, and so, to that point, I know I've taken a lot of time, but this is just, it's... I don't even know how to word it. It's kind of unbelievable to see these numbers, yet being able to really dig down and understand how it is that we got here, what it is that we're putting into place in order to move our students out of that, you know, is, you know, is, is helping me with that. Of course, I haven't even gone over the third grade Language Arts of those of students that are still at level-one. So, I look forward to the next one. I really do, because I look forward to the improvements. Thank you.
Diane?
On all of the elementary, middle school, and high school levels, excuse me, you list off appropriate progress monitoring and response to intervention. Can you, just at each of those levels, just quickly, high level, what does that actually mean for the audience? Like, what, how do we progress monitor and what are interventions look like?
Yeah, I can start with elementary. So, we are all, all aware, we use FastBridge for our screener system. We also use that for progress monitoring. So, a student gets a test, that's that red flag indicator, something's wrong, you know, let's take them to the doctor. We give a diagnostic assessment and then, we place them in an appropriate intervention. So, if I'm, if I'm a second grader, but I missed all my short vowels, then I go into an intervention that teaches that and I'm progress monitored on FastBridge for short vowel progress until I make my goal and then, I can move into the next appropriate intervention and testing, if you will, for progress monitoring.
And how often do we do that?
For students who flag high risk on screeners, the state recommendation is weekly. And then, if you are some risk on screeners, the state recommendation is bi-weekly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ditto for math, but with AMATH instead of A-reading, et cetera. And it is a little harder in numeracy because, like we said earlier, A-reading has kind of a one-to-one match of standard and screen, and math doesn't. A, AMATH doesn't have the strength that A-reading does. So, we are a little behind the eight ball. Did you wanna jump in on that?
Yeah, A-reading is not a test that we progress monitor. So, I just wanted to make sure we all understand foundational skills we progress monitor. Letter name, letter sound, nonsense word, and oral reading. But, we do not progress monitor A-reading because the FastBridge system does not have that capability. It is a benchmark we have recently added to our assessment protocol as an additional way to check in on how kids are doing with reading comprehension.
And progress monitoring for math is now being done through iXL. And since iXL is brand-new, we need to get through the cycles to figure out exactly how to progress monitor effectively with iXL and what the reports are going to look like so that we can teach the staff how to use them appropriately because it's all new, which is part of that professional learning related to the new curriculum and the intervention, which is iXL.
And how often are we progress monitoring that? Or, how often do we plan to?
We plan to do it very similarly, weekly, bi-weekly. Kids that are in an intervention are in an intervention always, right? So, they have core instruction and they have intervention instruction that's based on their identified gaps in the diagnostic. So, instead of it being short vowels, right, it's solving equations. And so, they're getting support on solving equations instead of short vowels. And they're getting support on, and, but, the kid, this kid's getting support on solving equations and this kid over here is getting support on exponents, et cetera, et cetera. So, the kids in the intervention class aren't all receiving the same intervention. They're getting intervention based on what their diagnostic says they need intervention on. That's appropriate intervention. Then, for high school, it's very different for ACT and ACT work keys because of how the high school day is structured. And that, the best intervention there is quality tier-one instruction on grade level. We have to make sure we're teaching on grade level.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
And that, I think that last point is important too, that especially when, you know, Melody was bringing up some of the, the numbers, that they're pretty drastic as far as number of kids that are in a level-one. Amanda can quote it better than I can, but, you know, there comes a point when those numbers are so high that it's a tier-one, it's a core issue. It's a tier-one issue. It's not, no amount of intervention will catch up seventy percent of our kids, right? So, we have to focus on core, which I do believe we are seeing the fruits of at the elementary ELA level, right? They have focused on the core. They focused on, I mean, you heard the lady speak about it tonight, that really intense ELA block. And it matters, right? It does, it does turn non-readers into readers or non-computers into computer, numerators? I don't know what you call them. Math kids, math kids. Anyway, to the point, right, focusing on the core is, is what we need to do. And your all investment in curriculum matters in that world. And then, our continued investment in professional learning, I mean, you could, you could kinda see that as a theme through tonight. Why are we good at teaching kindergarten? Because we've trained our teachers really well on how to do it really well. And it does matter. So, that investment, it pays off. It does take time, but it pays off, so. Great job, guys.
Thank you, Lauren and Amanda. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, consent.
Knoc?
I have nothing to pull.
Hazel?
I have nothing to pull.
I have no consent items to pull. Diane?
I have nothing to pull.
Melody? Julie?
Nothing to pull.
Kathy?
E-two and E-six.
E-two, E-six. I move that we adopt the consent agenda except for E-two and E-six.
Second?
Moved by Stan, seconded by Julie. There we go. It was catching up with you. Yeah. Motion carries seven-zero. E-two is the agreement to transfer former Park Elementary to the city Wichita. Kathy?
I wasn't quite sure how to handle this and that's why I pulled it because I am not in favor of that. And that also goes for E-six. So, I wasn't sure how to do that. I hope I did it correctly.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve E-two and E-six and then, you can vote against it.
Thank you.
Okay. I move that we adopt E-two and E-six from the consent agenda. I need a second.
Oh, I'll second.
Seconded by Julie and we can vote. Oh, sorry. Now, we can vote. Motion carries six-one with bond, voting no. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under miscellaneous superintendent's report.
Kelly?
All right, thank you, everyone. Great start to the school year and, and all sorts of ways. It's been, it's been exciting to, to be in buildings, be around kids. It's just, it's what it's all about. I was able to swing by and see a little bit of sub-varsity football, South and Southeast, tonight and caught a little bit of girls tennis. Tennis was my sport in high school, so it was fun to watch. And it was cool because, you know, the, the tennis coaches were telling me about, you know, numbers of girls that are out for tennis and, you know, South High has thirty-some and Southeast has forty-some. And, you know, I don't think our, our coaches probably get enough recognition. It's a lot of late nights. It doesn't really pay well for the amount of hours they spend. But, it, it can be transformative for kids, a way to plug into school, a way to connect. You know, we have a lot of things on consent agenda that you guys approved that have to do with athletics. And I think it, it pays off, right? It pays off getting those kids connected to school. So, lots of, lots of great stuff going on. We have, this Saturday coming up is Arts and Education Week, a celebration at the Wichita Art Museum from ten to three, which will have performances by, I wanna make sure I get them all, east, southeast, north, northeast, northwest, and south musicians from ten to three at the Wichita Art Museum this Saturday. So, super cool, free admission to the museum, so I hope everyone goes and checks that out. Another theme, I talked about professional development being a theme of tonight. But, I, I was glad our teachers, and isn't that cool, having teachers here tell us about what actually goes on? That's great. Talk about attendance, right? We know it, we know it. We know attendance is a, is a big deal. We approved Everyday Labs tonight, an expansion of that. But, to hear it from the, from the frontline folks, if kids aren't there, they can't learn, right? It's just that, that simple. So, September is national, a national attendance, school attendance awareness month. So, you'll see stuff on social that we're sharing. You'll see buildings that are doing specific things, getting kids. And it really, it does take a community, right? It takes all of us talking to one another about how important it is that kids show up to school, that they get there, that they're on time, all of those things. So, it is really, really critical and impactful. Along with that, you know, we will have, you know, we'll hit the ground running tomorrow morning with the, the work with Walpert, the work with communication as far as these next step go. And we'll keep you posted on that. So, that's all I have for my report. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Kelly. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, Board of Education reports and requests.
Are there any Board of Education reports and requests and/or new business? Thank you. Oh, sorry. Knack, Knoc?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm getting tired.
Not a report. I would like to at some point revisit the cellphone and personal electronic device policy, more so just to see, you know, how the role that has been, you know, what's been feedback from staff, students in terms of, you know, distractions to the classroom environment, any impact on like, you know, focus, learning, attention, student behaviors. And then, like, probably just like a broader conversation too on, you know, what else we can do to really address, you know, problematic social media usage, digital technology usage, so.
Thank you, Knoc. Kathy?
I would like to echo what Knoc has just said. As the superintendent and I have been in conversation about cellphone usage in our classrooms, it, it would really benefit not only the student, but the teachers and I think our behaviors in our buildings. If these phones were not allowed or permitted in the classroom, in the building, there's gotta be more boundaries and restrictions on the use of these cellphones. I agree with you, Knoc. We've gotta find some kind of a way to be able to make it to where these phones don't come out. And it's gotta be, it's gotta be across the board with all of our educators. They've, they've gotta agree to that policy. And I, you know, we, we talk about a lack of consequences at times and you hate to bring that up. But, if you're gonna have continuity throughout the district, what do we do?
So, I might suggest we just, we bring kind of an update to the board next month from, again, frontline people that are, that are in the trenches making it happen. And then, you all can then kinda have a, a policy discussion, maybe a starting point. I don't think we'll amend.
I don't think we'll amend, I don't know that I would recommend amending policy during the meeting, but we can maybe have some discussion and some direction. So, and kind of an update, making sure, I know Knock and Melody weren't on the board when you guys voted for our change last year to, you know, really have them put away in lockers for middle schools from bell to bell, from start of the day to the end of the day, and then not allowed in the classroom at a high school level. So, we can give an update and then kind of have a policy discussion. Does that sound... Good? Okay.
Melody?
Will the update be anecdotal, or have we actually been accurately charting the update on cellphone usage? Is it something that is actually charted? I mean, were persons, were we actually are counting how many are not using their cellphone? Or there are some buildings that are actually putting their cellphones away? What kind of information are we actually going to get? Is all I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, I don't think we'll have a chart by next month.
Okay.
I mean, I don't...
So, will it be anecdotal?
Probably, yes.
Just be what people are saying is going on? Okay.
Well, I mean, not just what there's, I mean, I think if I tell you, I might just be saying what's going on. But if we bring in principals who are NAPs or enforcing, they will be the ones that know what's going on, right? They're the people enforcing or not enforcing or whatever. So, I do think you're getting at the heart of the issue, which I think is what Kathy was bringing up too. And then, no matter what the rule is, rules are great, but consistency in enforcement is really the key. I have to admit, I shouldn't admit this, you know, because, but I'm kind of a habitual roll-through-yellow-light guy. And I saw someone get pulled over the other day for rolling through a yellow light, and I thought, I better quit doing that, right? If we don't enforce the things consistently, then we kind of ignore the rules. So, can we chart how consistently we're enforcing this? I don't think there's a chart that we can probably create for you to do that. But can we have a conversation about it? Yeah, I think we can. So, if that's okay with everybody, I think that's a good starting point.
That's fine. Thank you.
Hope I don't get pulled over for the yellow light.
Yeah, yeah.
It's easy to spot.
Patrick, next item, please.
Next item is adjournment.
I move that we adjourn. Moved by Stan, seconded by Kathy. We are adjourned.